Even though we have all board members physically present here, I think this is what we noticed in reading. I should still go through this. My blue address. March sixteen twenty twenty, Governor Abbott granted requests by hundred people Paxton versus ten of them from the meeting halls. This is necessary to allow. So far, we're here, talking to people, to discuss to the providers of the nineteen. Of course, we know this is good and rules are following. Uh, in way I see, we're trusting that they're regular, it's good and speeding, we noticed. So if you don't want me to go over there, we have all seven for further here's my twenty one twenty twenty. For the public, I can just play the meeting, uh, telephone, uh, dialing one five two zero eight one four four one seven and ten and four seven. For four and five. Uh, in order to provide public comment on the GEDI, I don't publicly submit a request to be sitting in the head of our email address. By twelve P M. today, two thousand and twenty one. I understand from Cindy, that we get to have one individual who sent in a request, correct Cindy?
Yes, just one.
Uh, no written comments, just a question.
Yes.
So at the appropriate time, we'll get to that, the GEDI, and we'll give that individual the opportunity to explain. If anyone notices me, if it's posted online for seventy two hours, uh, as I already indicated, all of these four national presidents. The work of the local government, and we use some split deep and beautiful software, uh, which will allow people to communicate from the public. Uh, as we would, if you're first meeting, from your following structures, for the meeting. Uh, in order to speak here in public comment session, now, we speak for three minutes on the meeting. Uh, we didn't have any, uh, time to sit that far. All of the people procedures we have before, open up, see, the conversation will be followed. And according to the meeting, we stated that we might have a little something better later today. Software application allows two hundred fifty people at a time to interact and apologize in advance for, you know, if they've told me. And ask for the questions if that, uh, doesn't work for you. Uh, if you have questions about any of the laws, please contact the office of return to email at eight 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 six seven three six seven eight seven. Or by email at home at O A B U dot Texas dot. So, uh, is that, uh, anything? Thank you, ladies. Uh, happy birthday, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
You know, a long, long time on the tradition of starting tonight. Happy birthday. You get the list, but.
Well, thank you.
We cannot hear the gentleman who's been speaking. Those of us who are on the call.
Speaking.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So where is?
Three.
Here, we did test it over there, but you still have to project.
So, uh, move over here. Is that, is that clear?
Can y'all hear him?
Anybody?
Judy Jackson says that's much better.
Okay, very good, very good. Uh, we have a number of information items, and I'm gonna ask if any board member has questions about, or we should take up any information items. And so we'll do that now. If not, we will proceed to the presentation discussion items. Okay, hearing from the board members on the information items, uh, we'll get on to the presentation discussion items. First, we're very excited with the schematic design, will be, y'all may be interested, Steve, that you serve.
That is outstanding. This paper gets prepared there, just to let everyone know that the schematic design members at first, a group of them from the board of trustees. And this is regarding our new elementary school. Uh, we have been working virtually with Steve A. Burnham, the head of the team, uh, along with a group of committee members for a good way on a state. Predominant of, uh, our teachers, teachers of former teachers of the year or current teachers of the year at our elementary schools. So very, very excited with people to work with, and this has been, um, recall how many weeks we've been working, uh, against today. About two and a half months, and it's been a very rewarding experience. And, uh, this is for our future. I know we have a lot of things that we have to discuss tonight that are in here right now regarding the COVID nineteen. But this is planning ahead, uh, for the future of Good Way I S D, and very excited to present, uh, on our new document. Mr. Heyward, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Heyward, I'm just present from the door. We are, yes, we are very excited to be here tonight, uh, to talk about the schematic design within the elementary. To walk through that and talk about the conversations that took place, uh, leading up to, uh, the delivery of what way I S D is looking for. Uh, from the delivery of her elementary education moving forward within the district. And some of the conversations that we had in general about entire concept, uh, and then also the ability to petition you. So, well, quickly, I'll run through, do I have this, or do you have control?
You could. Is it on?
No. That might, that might be helpful. That's hard not to do.
It's not working?
Try it again.
It's a little bit.
Let me just. I need. It's just not working. Just not working. Oh, I got, sorry, it doesn't too far.
Can you go to finish the topic, if that, if that helped, or do you want?
Kind of slide it back a little bit. Sorry about that, sorry for the delay. Um, some, some of the first information that, that we have shown in here is the description and, and kind of the buildup of anticipation of what this campus could look like. Uh, we, I'm not gonna read, uh, y'all have copies of this. Uh, this is information that we developed in preparation to hand to, uh, a construction manager, uh, that we're also discussing tonight. We're very excited about that conversation this evening also, so that we can start looking at pricing, um, and start looking at items. So I'll, I'll quickly, I'm struggling to go, I might be gonna obviously read that information.
That computer there.
Can you, can you do it for him?
Is it? It says I'm on page eighteen, where's the image? I'm leaving.
I'm gonna need to let, let me get it again. Hold on.
I can work.
Find where you are.
Oh.
That's better.
This, this looks better. It was, we were seeing that through the white sheet. Uh, okay, so this first page, it just describes, uh, community groups. And yes, we have, we have heard the large groups, I was obviously saying. Uh, we had, um, very, we drew out the schematic design, we had as many as thirty people, uh, on at the conference hall. Um, and we went through that process. This was, this entire project today has been done virtual. Uh, and so, uh, we got our challenges, um, but the team was great in working with them and getting on. We met on a weekly basis, uh, with the teachers and the staff and instructors, uh, and going through that. And, uh, probably we definitely appreciated their feedback and their attention throughout this entire process. So there's the description of all the processes and the, uh, systems, uh, that we would be considering within the project itself. So I, I'm not going to say go through that, don't add that. This is the, uh, uh, copy of the, uh, program. As we modified it from the original monitoring program, we met with the staff, went through, made sure we had all items addressed and included, uh, based upon the way that the district is delivering. Uh, in, in the original program, we started based upon the testing, the grid, the X and square footage. And we adjusted, uh, the program based upon what they needed. And this is the final program, uh, for the school, proposed out of entry, uh, based upon the program is a hundred and four thousand square feet. For seven hundred and fifty students.
Could you look for a couple of examples?
That's one grid is six hundred and fifty, I think it's a hundred less, and it's, I think, quite a amount of square feet, eighty eight, eighty nine, somewhere in that range. Uh, some of the space is driving the increase, obviously, is the number of students. Uh, then also, what you did, you see when we walked through, is the introduction of collaborative spaces within, uh, the educational program delivery. Uh, this is very common in the, in schools that we're seeing across the board today. Uh, so that, that increases the size of, uh, the, the actual square footage of the building slightly to increase to accommodate those classroom spaces.
Steve, one other question you might not know is off the top of your head, when, when K is converted to this insert element, your what was capacity? Do you remember? Does anybody?
Um, I think we were looking at it as seven hundred and fifty students. It's actually designed for, I thought it was eight hundred as, as an intermediate school. As we change, because we're going to have to modify, or we're gonna have to actually take multiple classrooms to create the kindergarten, the first grade classrooms. So we'll lose some of the capacity within there, but as I recall, I believe it stayed at seven hundred and fifty students.
Is it? Seven, at least seven hundred?
Yes.
Because it's adding to be over close to a thousand students every month.
Okay.
There's the sole, sole intermediate school.
Yeah. And, and, but when we ran it for a true elementary, the one to twenty seven, the one to twenty two, I think we, we can achieve at least seven hundred.
Would be very comparable to the sole intermediate.
Yes, it would be, yes. All right, uh, this image was, this was actually the, just a screenshot of one of our meetings. Uh, and let's say we appreciate it, or like, we started out in conversations with the group, kind of trying to get what their vision would be, uh, for a new elementary. Uh, we understand that none of these, uh, current staff are, they're not assigned, or they're not part of the school. But representing the district as a whole, uh, and, and those conversations of where educational delivery is moving and the things that we're beginning to see, you know, what was that vision of what they wanted to see? Collaboration, innovation, uh, obviously, uh, to go, to hurt the front, um, aspect within the staff's comments back to us. So these were just some questions that we ran through and asked them to kind of get their vision of what they saw, what kind of spaces they found it. Uh, what were they expecting to see from a classroom space? Also, the introduction of, uh, different opportunities, uh, for learning environments. Uh, we talked about a couple of learning environments, and you'll see some of that conversation from up there really long in the presentation. Uh, one of the major areas that we did talk about, um, was, uh, collaboration. And how collaboration, as we've seen, uh, has become a instrumental part in education, uh, over this, it's really been going over the last decade. Which has really seemed to take hold in the last five years or so, um, as far as introduction of additional space within their, uh, within the educational environment to accommodate, uh, these activities. Uh, what you see is what, what we kind of talked through the, the group with, was just, there's really three main types of way this is in, or in academic wing. Either you can integrate it into the classroom space and give them more space within a classroom uh, to accommodate, uh, different learning environments, additional furniture that could be utilized within the classroom. Uh, there's small group, uh, opportunities, uh, that are tied either directly to a classroom, identified specifically to that classroom, or within an area tied to classrooms to be able to utilize. And then there's the centralized option, where there's usually a cluster of classrooms that open up to, uh, a large central location that has a lot of different activities for the students that are, that easily be controlled and visually controlled, uh, from the adjacent classrooms. So allow students out into the space for project-based learning to do, uh, their individualized, uh, tasks and, and assignments that might be assigned to them. Uh, in the conversations, uh, with the groups, um, it, it really kind of came down to, to they liked, well, they actually liked all three, uh, options. Um, and depending upon the grade configuration and age of student that it's being utilized. A lot of the conversation, the younger students, uh, they thought could take advantage of, uh, the, the more smaller group setting that was tied to the classroom. Uh, and then as the kids got older, to be able to take advantage of these larger, uh, group settings, centralized settings to where they would be able to then come out as groups to be able to work in small groups outside the classroom space itself. So what we developed through that conversation is kind of what you see in there. It's, it's basically, it's a centralized group, uh, setting, uh, for collaboration that can actually be broken down to multiple walls uh, into small groups that are tied to each one of the classrooms. And you'll see that in the plan as we go through. Uh, this was, uh, this was a great conversation with the group, and we came up with this concept and design that, uh, everybody was pretty much in consensus that, uh, this is the direction that they thought was best, uh, for the, the design for the elementary. Uh, these are some of the other tools, I'll quickly run through these. These are just, uh, adjacency diagramming, looking at spaces, finding, we look at, uh, uh, different opportunities for the exterior of the building as far as, uh, the shape of the building, the look of the building, the materials, the color of the building. So these are just a lot of the tools that we utilize to co-create this new design with this.
Can you just move your phone in closer, we have to have that line. When I saw the light, Mr. Gordon, it doesn't matter, we're here speaking to us, so. All the way to the.
That chair? It is an omnidirectional mic, you don't have to have it in front of your face, like, it's just the distance.
Okay. All right. Starting to feel like Parker. For those of us who remember Frogger. Uh, so th- these are a lot of, uh, a lot of the tools, like I said, that we utilize to help co-create. Is that better? Oh, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll continue on until y'all tell me otherwise.
Yeah, it's better.
Okay. Okay, thank you. To co-create, uh, the environment that, uh, and, and the plan, and also just the vernacular and the, and the feel and the expectation of the building that, that we're gonna be presenting here in a few minutes.
Steve, why do you sort of like that real, little, little yellow orange thing around the school?
Oh, uh, those are the sun angles.
Ah.
We, we, when we look at site plans, we look at the direction of sun angles, we look at prevailing winds. There's, there's a lot of information that we overlay on a site plan just to be able to have those conversations. And, and as we look at the potential layout and how things might work within the actual site itself.
So that's important, I just couldn't read them.
Oh, yeah, it is small on that one, I'm sorry. All right, this, uh, this, uh, which is page five, five point one, is the site plan, um, of the site for the new elementary. Uh, of course, it faces onto Ritchie Road. As you can see, um, as, as you look around the site itself, we have three, uh, three predominant areas of traffic flow, uh, within the site itself. There's a parent loop off to the, I'm, I'm gonna say that, we're gonna say north is on the page. So we're gonna say to the east, uh, side of the building, uh, that is tied to, uh, one of the academic wings. Uh, and that's the older students, and that'll be a, a parent drop-off loop. You also have one in the front, uh, that is also a parent drop-off loop, uh, for the younger kids that are then on the west side of the building. Uh, then what you see in orange, going around the, the, the building itself, is, uh, that is the bus drop-off loop. So they will drop off in the back, uh, by the gymnasium. They will then loop around and then come back out, uh, to Ritchie Road. Uh, you see a, you see a large area that designated there, that area five, where the bus loop. That's actually a large concrete play surface, uh, that can be gated off during the day. Uh, one, to prevent traffic from flowing through there. Also, it allows you to multi-utilize that for, when you're not, when you're not utilizing it for the buses to come in and pick up the students. It can be a concrete play surface, uh, for the students. Uh, we, we would then put basketball goals around that concrete surface, so they would always have that ability. And it, it's directly accessed, uh, and the students do not obviously have to cross a drive aisle to get to any of their playground surfaces. Uh, one of the things that you will see in the site, you'll see, uh, four, five, six, and seven, which are the green boxes. Uh, these are, as we sat down and looked at, um, the, the different areas and outdoor, outdoor, uh, learning opportunities was very important, uh, to the staff. So we're, we're looking at multiple opportunities for, uh, playgrounds. Uh, you'll, you'll see, uh, actually, space number seven, uh, on the west side, that's over by the younger grade group. So that could serve as a playground area, uh, for that younger grade group. Uh, we also have an area six that is up here by the library, uh, and the special ed, uh, classrooms, uh, to provide them an opportunity to have a place to go directly outside their classrooms. Uh, you'll see an area four, which is kind of wedged in between, uh, the, the kitchen cafeteria and the academic wing. Uh, that area is kind of tied into, as we go into the plan, you'll see it's tied into what we're calling a fine arts area. It's actually an opportunity there that's provided outside for cover. It has some steps, it could actually serve as an outdoor amphitheater, uh, or a small group gathering. It's also a great space undercover and outside for the art classroom to be able to take advantage of that. Uh, and then the large area number five is running along the library, uh, and the cafeteria. Uh, this is also opportunities for both large group, outdoor learning opportunities, and we're looking at some small group. This would also be the area for, that's a large area back there, so it'd be a, the area for the, uh, older, uh, students, uh, playground as well as green space out there for them just to run outside of, uh, having just playground surface area itself.
Steve, is it possible, or I know it is, is it possible for all students to fit in the number five section? Is there anywhere that, you know, they have their band dates and things? I know they really have to write out what this design is.
Uh, depending upon how we lay it, and, okay, that's a valid point. Um, we haven't really gotten into the actual design of it, but I think the space there is large enough to accommodate it. As we started looking at, um, the, the actual, uh, large group, a larger group, it's, it's, when I say large group, it's usually about a classroom or two that wants a space to be able to go out and have an outdoor learning environment. And then there's usually a type to that, there's some small group to allow, uh, smaller groups of students to go over, uh, outside. Uh, when they're out there with their major groups to break out and, and do different, uh, activities. There's, I think there's more than enough area out there possibly to accommodate a large group setting. It, I don't know about the whole, we can look at that, if that's something we need to take advantage of.
Generally, generally, this will break up those days now, not all of them one day. And any other of you utilize, uh, the management? And you, you utilize the indoor facility for their field days too, so not quite as a demand.
Yeah, I think that was if they're picking ball, they're doing something, they're close to all these buildings, or they're in a room that, I mean. And that given space here, is it big enough then to have a game of kickball or get some game through it?
Right. Th- th- this green, this green space that's, uh, here between the buildings, it's about a hundred and seventy feet. It's over the width of a football field.
Oh.
So, yeah, it, it, like I said, it's a big area. It, it looks small here, yes.
Hey Steve, what, uh, what were the thoughts of the other fifty acres behind the building? Is that?
Okay.
Anything in the master plan of, of that space?
Well, well, yes, uh, we are now, we, we've set it up to, and that's the reason we've looked at, we have a drive that's going out and connecting to Park Place, uh, over in the, in the housing development that's off to the east. Uh, we also, this main drive, we designed this main drive here where the buses come in to be able to be widened into multiple lanes, uh, to where we can connect back into the, into the property that's remaining. Uh, now, we are master, we did run through a quick master plan, uh, to be able to accommodate another school, uh, on the site. Uh, and, and still accommodate the detentioning that we'll need to do on the, uh, the, the, the northeast corner of the property as we head towards, uh, the creek where, where all the water's headed. Uh, and so, yes, we did run through a master plan, uh, to accommodate another school on there. And we've set it up to where we can add that in the future if we need. Does it, did that answer your question, or what? I wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, just.
I didn't.
In that scenario, it certainly would be dominated by the elementary school that, uh, reached the road. I don't know if you, people to see if there's another school back there, building, I don't know.
Well, it, it, a lot of it depends upon what it is, and you, you have, uh, we're, we're taking up, I mean, you've got fifty acres there, and we're taking up about fifteen of those acres. Uh, and so you have, even with the detentioning, you have enough property to put a potential middle school on that site. Uh, and that's what we utilized as a test fit was to put, you know, could we put a middle school on that site? And we can accommodate a, a middle school. If, if you had a large enough middle school on, on that property in the back, you, you would still notice it back there.
Yes. I think there's another good opportunity there to, to work with the community too. I don't know if, uh, the human parks and rent folks, if, if we've talked to them, you know, or someone's like looking for field space or something collaborating with the, I mean, that's a big, big field back there.
Well, i- i- it is, and no, we have, we have not, uh, discussed, now, we have met with the city, uh, just to talk through the project and, and some of the, um, constraints that we have with the site and, and that we're working through. But we did not specifically talk about, uh, any fields or anything as far as joint use types of, nothing.
It's, it's hard to visualize, because you don't see this piece of property in your mind, but the back part that Mr. Coles is asking about does eventually border, um, Cubic Park. So our properties border, and that's where, uh, as you're talking about, when we talked about some of the issues regarding the city, dealing with sewage and making sure we have the right proper lines in, that's what they're trying to, is that section.
Correct.
But it is, in terms of the idea of parks, there is the human park there already, and, um, until this land is used, that, that's available in the future for collaborative, collaborative things. Just haven't gotten to that step yet for the master plan, but it does, will be adjacent to the park.
Yeah, but basically, our, our master plan was basically just a site test fit. And we wanted to make sure that, uh, could we fit a middle school on that site? Because that's basically, it's perfect sizing for a middle school. So yes, we, we would be able to fit a middle school on there if we needed one. All right, uh, the next couple of plans, I'll just run through very quickly. The, this is the overall master plan, uh, of the, of this building itself. Uh, in the conversations and as we were working with the design committee, uh, a lot of the conversation that came out was, uh, natural light within the classrooms. Uh, they wanted, uh, we, we, we did a lot of virtual tours of existing campuses before we started the conversation so that they could kind of see what was being done out in, uh, other facilities around the city. Uh, and, and a centralized, a, a big conversation was a centralized, uh, library space, uh, that everything kind of fed off of to where. kind of fed off of to where the, the library itself became the heart and soul of the building itself. And everything would, they kind of saw everything wanting to radiate off of this core piece, this very important piece within the building itself. And easy access from that point going out to the various other events that are taking place in the academic wings, the cafeteria, and the activity room. So, and then this is the second floor. So it is a two-story configuration. The, the older classroom, the second and third grade level is on the first floor, the fourth and fifth grade are on the second level on the two-story academic wing that is on the east side of the building.
Yeah, I, I find that curious because much spaces would we have, why would we go two stories when we could obviously go out just less than we needed to? One story.
Well, you can. There, there is some cost associated with it. We have seen there is some value in going to a multi-level building. Also looking at the ability to make sure that we can utilize as much of the property in the future. In the conversations and, and the various opportunities and different one buildings that we've looked at, everybody really liked the two-story option. And, and so that's just kind of where the design committee as a group kind of moved towards.
Would it save money?
Yes, it will.
They like it, I'll say again. They like it as a saving, they also like it because of the separation, because this building, this elementary school starting pre-K all the way to fifth grade, so remember our new configuration. So the upper grades believed it would be on the upper floor, but allow that, allow the others, older students more separation from the younger students and just, you know, also for the students and their experience as well.
Right. So this, this, this is a different configuration than what you have been accustomed to. Yes, sir, you're correct. I appreciate that. Good question. But yes, it, it, it is two-story, and why did you not do the entire building two-story? Something has to be on the two-story, on the first level, and there's certain things that make sense to be on the first floor. I mean, we, we, we've actually done multiple-story elementaries. You don't see that too often in Texas. I'm saying the three-story elementary. We do see a lot nowadays just due to available land, the cost of land, you're seeing more and more two-story buildings taking place. Yes, you had the site to be able to do that, but as we started looking at everything and a lot of the conversation with the design committee and as we toured the various different buildings that are out there and what they saw, how they functioned and, and how they did separate, I think that was part of the conversation and Dr. Kazanis is exactly right. It does help to break that up a little bit. And, and the same thing with the library being the central point within the building. It allows you to break the building into areas and sections. Does that, does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I answered your question. Okay, so 6.3 is the, the, these are enlarged plans for you to be able to see is as you walk in to the front entry, you've got the administration area immediately to the left within the control desk. As you walk into the building, that's where you see, you walk right into the hallway that crosses and that is your, what we're calling is the Center for Learning and Innovation. And as, as we go through this conversation, what you'll see is this concept is, it, it's an open concept library. There, there, there are no walls enclosing the library itself. You see it's open to all the surrounding wall, hallways around them. It does have an office. There is a maker space within the library itself, you'll, you'll see that associated with it, and then there's the workroom and support spaces that are needed within the library. But the library itself is open and free-flowing for the students to be able to engage with that space on a regular basis.
And then it's accessible from the second, directly from the second floor as well?
Yes. Actually, you see, you'll, you'll, you see the stair that's coming down into the library itself. That goes up and ties into that.
So all the kids can go straight into it?
Yes. Now, one of the things I didn't touch on is with, if you've been out this side, this side has a little bit of topography. It does slope from one end of the site to the other end of the site, it slopes about 40 feet, actually. It's pretty significant. So one of the things, we took advantage of the natural slope. As you see on one side of the library, there, there's a ramp. We actually stepped the building twice in here from the front to the back at 30 inches two times to get a total drop of five feet from the front of the building to the back of the building to tie in with, and minimize the amount of, that's one of the things, is we were talking with the civil engineer and working with them, if, if there was a way to take advantage of and minimize the amount of dirt that we're having to move within the site itself to create a path and accommodate the building. You see the, the prepaid classrooms are right there across from the administrative area. You see off to the right, there is the, the special ed and the behavioral intervention classroom, the motor lab, kind of some of the support spaces. Special ed space is right there for easy access to come out to the front for quick drop-off, but yet they're still engaged completely with the library and all the activity that's taking place within the building. A lot of the, some of the other special resource classrooms and spaces are then spread out into the academic wings themselves. The next, the next page is, would be the wing on the west side. That is the lower grade level. That's your kindergarten, first grade classrooms. You see the cluster of six classrooms arranged around a central collaborative space with movable walls. So there's four small class collaborated spaces in that central core that then could create a hallway that they continue down, or they can open them all up into one larger centralized space. This was something that I, I know when we were working with the design committee, they were, they were very excited about the concept and working through that. You see each grade level kind of has its area, then in the center, as in, in the elbow of each one of the wings is kind of the core spaces where the restrooms, janitors, closets, storage, there's a teacher planning space and a teacher lounge within, within those All right. The next plan is, is the back. You see the ramp coming down from the, the, along the bathrooms, along the hallway headed from the library off to the right-hand side that runs down next to the restrooms, down to get you down to that lowest level where the dining, gymnasium, kitchen stage, and then the music room is, is right there. There is a, it's kind of hard to see on this hallway, but there's a, there's also a ramp going up along the music hallway where it's actually up to two and a half feet to where when you enter into the, enter into the, from the music room, you can walk directly out onto the stage. And then you see the ramp off to the side of the stage to get back into cafeteria dining area. We've also made, you'll see between the dining and the gymnasium, a, a movable wall system to where that would allow you flexibility in larger advance to be able to open up that wall and actually be able to have LARP extend out into the gymnasium for seating if you have more than you can accommodate within the cafeteria space itself. So it gives you a lot of flexibility between the gym and dining space to share those spaces and be able to utilize those jointly through the process.
We have to, I would admit, parents that we just say, God bless you, those are pens for tarts in the can.
Well, and, and, and we're doing this a lot more. You're, you're seeing a lot more flexibility between spaces. We, we've started to open up, well, now with movable walls and glass walls, you're opening up hallways, even if you have a hallway along cafeteria, we can make it glass and make it movable to where you can open up and increase your capacity within that environment, so. The next, next slide, which is 6.6, is the east wing first floor. It is the second and third grade. If you'll notice, all the wings are very similar, the classroom sizes change, the second, third, fourth, and fifth classrooms are all the same, they stack, and they have that same knuckle where the kind of the core spaces, the restrooms, you see the teacher planning, teacher lounge, you see the resource, there, there was a space, there was a, a special ed program that we integrated back into that classroom because it's utilized more by those grade levels, so. And, and then you'll see grade level storages, you also see single-user toilets for staff in each one of the grade levels. Next floor, it, our next slide is the second floor of the, the library. You'll see, you'll see on, on that space above, it's, it's a two-story volume within the library. There's an outdoor learning space on a second level deck that is actually tied to the science lab. So the science lab off to the right, which is off the porch on the next slide, but has direct access out onto that patio, that second floor patio to be able to utilize for outdoor science experiments for the, for the campus. You'll see also within that space, there's a green room on the second floor that we're looking at trying to open up and provide a lot of visual connection within that environment so that they can see that as the kids are doing morning announcements, they're creating stuff within that green room, it will all, everything, we try to do as much now as possible to have education on display. And this is a great opportunity to be, for the kids to be able to see what's taking place within that green, green room when they're creating things in that space. You also have the literacy library and the interventionist and then, and then a classroom for that interventionist up on the second floor within that space. The next slide is 6.8, which is the fourth and fifth grade. It, it, as, as I stated before, it basically stacks on the second and third floor below. You'll see the, the same classroom layouts with those core spaces in the knuckles with the, so each grade level does have a, a storage space to be able to accommodate and be able to utilize within the grades. The, the next item is, as we started talking about opportunities for what the vernacular of the building might look like. In the conversations with the design committee, there, there was a lot of conversation about different fields within the material, contrast within the materials, contextual, looking at some interest within the elevations. In, in talking with Dr. Kazanis and the administration, there was also, we wanted to be respectful of the other buildings that are in the area. And, and that's one of the things that you see on this particular slide. You see the, the image of the Hewitt City Hall and library, and then we also looked at, you know, the new fire station. While not trying to mimic exactly what was taking place there, we were trying to be respectful of that. So you looked at, so in, in talking with the design committee, we looked at a brick product that would mimic that kind of stone look and, and have that feel, you'll see that on the upper piece. And then also introduction of a, a darker grayish brick, a dark gray brick that would give some accent and bring out the dark colors within the molded brick color itself. And then also the introduction of some, some, some metal panels around the top of the building to give it some interest and, and some, and some accents around the building So the next, the next slide is, as, as we get into what some of those images could look like, that this is actually the, the entrance into the, main entrance into the school. You'll see the administration area off to the left, there's a long canopy leading up to the front entry that's covered from the drive for protection. There's some, there's some outdoor spaces that we can utilize to create some, create some interest at the front and tie over to the, the, the wing, special ed wing off to the right. You'll see some of that blending of the brick itself. And then you see the, the library, the library was very important to accentuate and that was a lot of the conversations that took place to, to make it a centerpiece within the overall design of the facility. This is kind of the, to me, this slide here, the next one is, while it's small, it's probably a better idea of what a lot of the conversations took place is trying to create, you know, warm, cool feelings within the elevations, looking for opportunities to blend and create interest, recessing the facade, putting a different color brick. You'll see, you'll see that molded stone look brick is the, is the field brick, and then on the corners, looking at utilizing the darker brick. And then you'll see that blended through the entire building all across all elevations to try to create some interest and accent within the building itself. And then you'll see the metal canopies and screens to, to provide shade over the windows in the appropriate locations. And then you see the, the library vernacular with, with the glass trying to create as open opportunity as possible, create some overhangs, create some interest. They could be, in the design team when they were talking about that, that would be something that they would be looking at doing in, in metal panel. And it's up high, creating a, a single slope roof. There was a lot of conversations, if you remember back on a couple of slides, we presented three different options, three different roofs considerations. And when, when we met with the design committee itself and presented all three, everybody liked something out of all three. So what, we, we tasked the design team to go back and look at opportunities. We simplified the design on a lot of the roofs and then integrated some of the concepts with, within all the designs into one design and, and came back and presented this to the committee and we, and we got consensus from the design committee that they, they, this was the direction that they had envisioned and really wanted to move forward with.
Steve, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a beautiful design. First of all, I was wondering if the committee had any discussion about what a departure this is from the design or existing elementaries? Is that important to Hewitt system or like they're good with it being different? This is very striking, but it looks different.
Well, it, it's definitely different than what your previous elementaries had been. There, there were some conversations. I think they saw this as an opportunity to look at a different idea and concept. Since you were going with the new design, you were increasing the size of the school. They, they, I think they saw that as their opportunity to, to look outside what had been done. So, I don't want to speak for them, but that, that was what my interpretation of what we, in the conversations that we got.
Hey, I don't know if this is where you're coming from, I mean, I do feel a little uncomfortable with us outclassing other, other schools.
Right, yes.
I mean, I don't think it's fair to the other schools and the kids and the families that attend those schools if we have one that's, that's better.
And, and it's not outclassing if you, if, I mean, it looks different and the bricks are, it's still the same materials, it's still the same roof, it's just done in a little different arrangement. I mean, it's.
We don't have one with last wall, second floor.
Well, I, I know the features, I know, I guess, in terms of working with the committee is that those were designed here for them. Where now, that was like the last design. Where now, that was the last design in Woodway. The castle, the great things of education have changed. And in their booklet, we really felt the concepts of the study that had been done, that cluttered, cluttered design of flexible furniture that had been done at the Goli, Woodways last year was critical. And that's why the, it's really, the fact that it's driving us, this is a, the first way it comes to mind is clutter. Came over and over again from the folks working with this because there's much more ability to collaborate, share some students, also in terms of each grade level and take responsibility for learning of all the students that are in each grade level. The second thing though is functionality. And that's some of the things we do struggle. So in terms of utilizing every single space we can in the building. So we have the opportunity. You go to the part that shows that why it kind of wraps around and you saw a large playground in the middle. Let's call it that every inch of space is trying to be designed to learn. So they're not just imagining the learning room to be just playground, definitely fully playground equipment, but also learning, outdoor learning equipment as well too. And then that central library. So I just think we have better interior building materials, with ability now to have some, what, movable walls and mounted floors that are much more functional. And so yeah, they're different than the other schools. But.
Would you like to talk about the aesthetic of the library?
Yeah, I guess. Inch group.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think a glass wall, I think glass, those glass walls are cheap because there's a maintenance associated with them. There's air conditioning costs associated with that much glass.
I think you look at that part.
Well, and yes, we are showing a lot of glass. We are still studying exactly how much glass will be in there. That's still part of the conversation. This was obviously a schematic design presentation.
I'd say that did have to do with the educational factor or collaboration factor. And that's, talking about that, I'm just saying, okay, the looks from the front of the building here.
Yeah, and that's why, Steve, I imagine you put that one into the booklet. In our discussions, we did, you're talking about the fact that if you have, like the library in Central, it's useless, those space are unusable if with that glass you have the sun leaking right in. Because for example, we have a wall trick on the end. You look at the glass here coming right into the front entry of the surface seats. And so we made some adjustments. And so that's why they're studying every angle of the sun because you're exactly right. That's just the first stat added. But we did talk about they don't have to have all of those to minimize, you know, efficiency as well as function because no, that's not part of it. Future that Steve has, right now on the screen there. Because again, if you're at an angle and then you get the hot afternoon sun, then that's not going to work.
It does give that wow factor and see that that was part of your discussion, correct?
Your post.
Yeah, it's very striking.
I mean, and in the conversation and the reason the library became, it was, you know, it was the conversation of this is the heart and soul of the building and it wants to be something that people recognize. And to your question, or to your, you know, to your comment and to Dr. Kazanis's comment is, the last elementary, yes, Castle Creek was a prototype of your previous, you know, the Woodway design, which is really a 15-plus-year-old building design. You know, the conversations that took place 15 years ago compared to the conversations and the way education is being delivered now, it has changed significantly in the last 15 years. And, you know, a lot of this is responding to that, in my opinion. It's not to say that, you know, one is better than the other. It's just different. And I think it was part of the conversation. This is what we're seeing, the conversations across the state take place. We're actually seeing districts going back, and this is obviously a conversation that y'all might have to have someday is if, you know, and as you move forward, you're going to have to probably go back and assess the existing campuses and find ways to introduce or accommodate these different types of delivery within the existing buildings. I know y'all are doing a lot of that right now as part of the conversation and the experiment that y'all have been doing with Region 12 and us and Baylor within the flexible furniture. Furniture plays a huge part in the conversation of, you know, choice within the classroom and being able to have flexibility within the classroom.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not, as far as the designing of the spaces and how to be used, I'm not so much on that. It's just the finish and making sure it's comparable to what we have. Using modern materials, you know, using the stuff that's available to us now. I just don't want to outclass our other buildings.
Well, I'm quite excited. I see where you're coming from. It has on the grid was the element that looked so much like Woodway. And every time we had a new school, I thought they all looked a lot nicer than our old schools when we had them. Like, Woodway is built up, oh wow, this looks like a setup from Zabowski. Because by then, Zabowski just looked like a square building, you know? And then the high school, so, I think some of this, every time you get a new one, it's gone a little nicer than the old because it's new. It is a new, some new concepts. And I can see your eye concern about all the glass and everything. But I think every time we build a school, otherwise it'll look better than it before. Hewitt, elementary, it's a whole lot different from the other schools. And when it was built, it was very unique for its structure as well. And then also, I think we've got, you know, our grade and the fifth graders in. I know it's just one more grade, but what's striking is this is a more mature building. And I think some of your feelings that, you know, this looks like it's older students. It doesn't have your typical elementary look. And so that's a little different. And I don't think, I don't mind it, but I think that's part of us who have our feelings, like this looks more like a high school or older school because of that all the glass in the library. And that's not a bad thing, but it's just a different, a different look.
Well, and we will be back to present, obviously, the interiors. And, you know, when we get into interior colors, particularly at that elementary, it's going to look and feel on the inside like an elementary. As we started having the conversations of what their vision of, how they wanted the space to be seen, and then also responding to what we saw within the community, within the area relative to, you know, what we saw at the, at the public buildings for Hewitt, their new buildings. You know, all of that concept, that's kind of what drove a lot of the conversation.
Part of town, and those all have that little, I miss. Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it's that class in the other schools. Actually, it's really different and more modern, so I can see it's.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I see your point.
And we always will keep in mind too, like, what our budget is on this and the design. And so we're not just building a tall home and on the seventh and have to, when we fit it out, go over these, we're going to have a big time. Does it cost back?
No, sir.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I've been watching the numbers and looking at the square footage as the building has grown a little bit. And we're working on our geotag so we can know exactly what our foundation is going to be. We think we're very positive within the area, knowing what we saw at Castle Creek, that we were very optimistic on the type of foundation that we'll get to use. Now, we do also understand that, you know, we have some wastewater issues that we're going to have to address. And that's one reason I'm very excited that hopefully, you know, we get a construction manager on soon so that we can have them start helping us with that. But I've looked at the numbers and kind of what we've seen elementary is going for in the recent future. And actually, we're seeing very positive environment, bidding environment. And actually, across the state, we bid several projects, both in Houston, Austin, San Antonio, and Colleen, and several in the metroplex within the last month. And all of them have come in under our budget. So, and right now, looking at the square footage and what we think is a reasonable range, we are within budget. So I wasn't saying that at the end, but since you brought it in.
I'm also prepared, if it's always possible, we'll use the money somewhere.
Well, I remember the directive, so yes, it saves me my mind. And then this is that two-story element on that patio. There's a cover coming out of the library space. There's also that balcony space that comes off the science lab. And then right now, of course, we're just showing the green space. We don't have that space designed yet. But you kind of see, you'll see off to the right-hand side of that, that's the hallway headed down along the dining, headed towards the gym. And then you see your two-story academic wing off to the left. And then this is that, this is just a quick image of that little fine arts. One of the things, I ran through the plans pretty quickly, but the art classroom is actually directly off of an open, an open glass into the library. So there's a lot of the art that will be on display. We're also looking at the potential of having, this is the art lab that you're seeing the glass on the back on this covered patio area for art students that can bring the classroom out, do art outside. There's also with the natural photography, we can create some steps and create some interest for a little outdoor teaching environment or a little outdoor amphitheater that the students could utilize, have events and stuff out there in that space. Once again, it's a concept. We haven't fully developed that, but this is kind of some of the things that we're looking at. One of the important things that we talked about early on was the library and the open concept of the library. This is something new to Midway ISD. These are a couple of examples when we went through our virtual tours with the design committee. These are all schools that, elementary schools that we've done in the recent past. The one off to the left is actually the, it's actually a K8 campus in Dripping Springs ISD. And that's their library space in the center of their, in the center of their school. The one on the lower right is, the school has been open for a year. That is actually the, was the new elementary for Northwest ISD, Lance Thompson Elementary. And you see there was something that, they wanted to do something a little different. They introduced some blue land beams, created trees within their, that's what you're seeing in the green, is the concept of the tree ties into the wood glue land beams. And then the upper right is a canning elementary for Great Mine College of ISD. What you're seeing there is the stair, they have a two-story academic wing, a portion of their building is. It opens up into an outdoor collaboration area. They have a great outdoor space wedged in between some spaces where they have, they put in some, some outdoor teaching spaces. They have put in some wood, they're basically stomps that the kids can go out and sit on. And then they have a teaching wall that they can go out and utilize. Then what you're seeing on the upper left of that picture is actually their green room where they do all their filming for their announcements and stuff for the school are done there. Same type of concept where it's easily and visually on display for the students to see what's taking place within the room. And then this image, we just, these are great images. Because we just started taking a look and looking at the site, applying studies, what could possibly be within that library space. So we're in the process of studying that and trying to figure out what is the right elevations, how much glass can we have? What do those walls and spaces, what does that make your space? How do these different opportunities engage? We have this, we have this hallway that's headed over to the second through fifth grade classroom wing. And then the library is stepped down by 30 inches. We have opportunities there to create. I don't know if anybody has been to the Lee Elementary in Cappell ISD, but they have a step library like this where they introduce seating and various little nooks for the kids to sit in. And it's an open library concept. So you're seeing this more and more utilized and taking advantage of it. Creates a very, you can create very interesting and open spaces, free flow. The whole purpose of this is, it's no longer, you know, I have to go with the library. It's a fun place to get. The, this, the last slide is the, is the schedule itself. We're presenting schematic design tonight. So we are on schedule for the project. And that was based upon the revised schedule to advance it, to try to get it out as soon as possible. So, you know, with that, I will open it up for questions or any other questions that you might have at this time. Be happy to answer. But, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, but we're very pleased with the work that the design committee had done with us. It wasn't exactly the way we wanted it to occur, but everybody did a great job at collaborating with us and coming up with, I think, is a great solution.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, here's my wheelhouse. Sorry. In the post-COVID world, what about this design incorporating that COVID has brought into the educational space?
There was actually conversations relative, because we do have one of our, our VP of Educational Practice actually sits on the state insurance board for the state on TDA. And there's been a lot of conversations relative to opportunities and how to address that. We actually discussed the potential of looking at, and they're looking at transferable diseases, not just specifically COVID, anything that could come up in the conversation. The, there was conversations relative to bathrooms. How do you trace, how do you keep, you know, how do you keep students engaged? We discussed opportunities about, we looked at potentially spreading the cafeteria, the party, the multiple, the problems that you run into, what we're, what we struggled with is it created, it still creates more issues for the district as a whole than the solution at the moment and the conversations that are taking place. We did, I mean, we talked about, I don't know, there was probably half a dozen items that we talked about. We ended up looking at, you know, the pros and cons of each one. And we did not implement any of them into the design at this time based upon, you know, conversations with the administration as to exactly what is the best way to address that at this time.
Yeah, I know some things that I come across or I see, you know, paintable or you talk about microbial surfaces.
Yeah.
You know, I know you're not even finished off stage yet, but stuff like that. I mean, when we're, if we're talking about delivering more classes virtually, the reality is that's probably not going to go away at the time of COVID. I mean, how is it, are there spaces incorporated where the teachers can deliver their classrooms or do their remote teaching from dedicated spaces that would, that would be, you know, efficiently designed to be able to do that?
Well, and I, and I don't, I can't speak for the district and I know they don't really know. I, there's been a lot of conversations and a lot of experts that I've heard talk about this is they believe that, yes, in a middle school and a high school, they, I think you're going to continue to see this occur. It's a lot harder to do from the people that I've spoken with at an elementary level to do a virtual training. I know the teachers in Texas have been doing a great job at it. But they're, in most of the people that I've talked with, there's something, this loss at that elementary level and that engagement is really needed.
We do have a green room, we're calling the second floor. We do have a design in, you know, if teachers were to take their, you know, videotape a lesson or a talk. Generally, with our technology, we can utilize regular classroom. When one, we can capture that and just be using a regular classroom or videoing the teacher already that is, has students with him or her and then have a video already and then have that start building in the library.
I don't think it's an issue. You can take your lecture from your phone. So I don't think technology is any issue at all. So I don't think technology is any issue at all.
I, I think by.
I'm just making sure we're thinking about it, that we're, you know, considering the way that the world has changed at this point. And what that looks like looking forward.
Well, I, I do think that one of the things that we talked about and one of the, one of the big conversations is the ability, if a student in a certain area gets sick and has been at the facility is trying to trace. I believe that with the distribution, you know, each area has restrooms in it where they're not as consolidated. We tried to spread the restrooms out as much as possible so they have easier access to toilets. There's less people using those toilets, so it's easier to trace if there is an issue.
I think the flexibility here has been built in. One of the typical, with all the flexible learning seating desks and the climbing spaces, they give you a lot of flexibility where if you need to go to traditional classroom, you got it. Where if you need to space out and have, you know, it's a six class and you all of a sudden have 12 classes. And it feels like with COVID, that's the winner to the ones that are the most flexible classes. It can adapt and it feels like that's kind of built in. Couple of things, in all of our other campuses, we, we tended to go back and add canopies for the drop-offs and pickup areas. I think it'd be smart to go and design that into the building structure when we get here.
We, we've already had that conversation. I've had it actually a couple of times with the team because they, they've sent me plans and they didn't have them on it. So we, we, we actually have one that wraps around the back of the gymnasium or the bus drop-off. We're talking about a full-length canopy coming into the building. We also have one that we had talked about on both for the smaller students coming out. They can come out directly at the front end and they were going to put a canopy. And they were not shown on here, they, you will see them on the DVD presentation because we, we had already printed before we were able to get those integrated into it. And then there, we've also talked about adding one down the length of the drop-off for the, the bigger drop-off, which is for the second, third, fourth, and fifth grade level. Out there on the new side.
The other consideration, the two-story, it's hopefully in that center learning area where it's shaded. So if you recall the design, we had a two-story and with the library room in the center area to be shaded instead of direct sunlight for the kids or the different, you know, as well as the art, as well as anything.
Right.
So that was a big consideration too, is the shape of the building so that we can utilize the building itself to shield the sun.
And, and shade capability outside, obviously there's no trees on the side. So, I mean, trees will be planted as part of the landscaping department, but we will also, there was a lot of conversation about providing other shade opportunities when they had class, when they had classrooms outside.
This is a long shot because I don't think anyone will freeze over this quickly, but if they did do a full-day pre-K, there's only two little classes on here. Is that, or what do we do in that instance? I mean, I'm assuming we would get a lot more kids if this legislature actually approved that.
I'm not sure, I should already provide a full-day pre-K.
Well, if.
And it's just for Jack, each school has, has the number seven hundred and fifty kids as our general.
You don't think it would go up with it?
I guess so, then maybe a general two per school.
Well, and I, I think there, I think there were three classrooms that were assigned for pre-K.
There were probably three, you know, ahead for delegating that, I can't remember either.
Yeah.
Most schools have one or two, maybe we've grown to two.
Oh, not two. There's, there's two and then there's the A B C that was next to it.
Qualifies, so not everybody can have, I think that's how we usually just do that. Not every student qualifies for pre-Ks. It's qualified can free reduce lunch counts for the, you know, it's a second language military. So it, it just gone, that, that pre-K number has gone on based on historical numbers. For four or five years. A lot of the special education, that's why you see a lot of special education rooms. But that is our rolling program and the equitable across the district to have a different programs. So that's why we have certain classrooms together and special education resources, classrooms scattered.
Well, and that was part of when we went through the program evaluation and, and was looking at that, make sure we had everything addressed. What we, what we discovered in a lot of your campuses is you, you have these programs, but they've just kind of taken over space that they've just kind of, they've created space and made it work. It wasn't ideal for a lot, for some of the programs. So we adjusted the program a little bit to make sure that we were addressing everybody. Everybody had their opportunity to speak relative to the spaces that were included, so.
Tell us what else, okay? Anybody else? We got this on the agenda, you have questions or comments, discussion, now's the time.
Just want to say thanks to the staff, president, representative of the design committee for all of Alex, input, Franklin, of different folks, Jesse, Becky, Ashley.
Well. Well, they were consistent. They were there at every meeting and they, we used the chat box and, and that worked great in our, in our meetings. They were very inquisitive and asked a lot of questions, so we appreciate it definitely.
All right, very good question today.
Thank you.
Very good. River Valley Innovation Design Development. I'll call, what else do you think I hear you?
That's going to be my challenge. All right, so tonight we have the design development presentation for River Valley. So this is two months more development since we saw you last on this project. So we've continued to be virtually as well with Mr. Alfelder and Buddy and a few others. And so we have further laid out each individual room. So you'll start with some chemistry and things like that in there. But probably the, the biggest change is the site plan. So that's where I want to start tonight, it's on page two. So just as a reminder, the existing building is on the left-hand side of the sheet and then the addition is in the bold outline. And then one of the big questions last time was the capacity for athletic parking, after-hours, mint parking, things like that. And so you'll notice that the parking lots, the shown on the right side of the plan has grown significantly. Last time we just had a single aisle and now we've got three aisles. And so we have a total now of 410 parking spaces on site. Last time, I believe we had two fifty-six, somewhere around there. So we've grown almost 150 more spaces. And so we do think this is very comparable to the middle school. We've also talked to Mr. Sheldon and what he thinks his needs are. If there were competition events occurring in the gymnasium, he thinks that this will meet his needs as well. And Mr. Alfelder, I believe, also comfortable with the capacity that this provides. What we are going to continue to look at is, all of this is in the parking after-hours. How can we utilize this during the day? And so Dr. Zanas' challenge was to look at, can we get some basketball courts striped on there? Or can we even look at a band practice lot and striping the parking lot for that as well? So we're going to continue to look at that so they can utilize it in the whole place. And then to the right, we'll see we've kind of shifted the tennis courts and rearranged those to make room for more parking. We still have the two practice fields, one with the track around it as well. And then you'll see numbers nine and 10, that square box kind of right in the middle of all of that. Number nine is the athletic storage for all of your track events, your high jump and pole vault and those events and all of that. So we want to provide that out near that space. And then number 10 is dashed in to where we can eventually in the future add onto that building for concession restrooms if and when that track and field becomes a competition venue.
I like that you did, I think you did so well better.
So it's, I'm trying to revolve you, but so it's master plan. It's discussed in our last schematic design, the master plan, so we continue to grow. We wanted to convert and use this as another competition football field that we had planned and laid out for COVID.
Right.
But as Aubrey mentioned, number nine was critical. We have now, though, just a small area there for storage. We will be using that in practices, of course, and things of the kind of nature. And she mentioned the parking, parking was great for us to increase that to 410 more. Utilizing the, the existing space that we had, compromising anything else with the current building itself. Very, very thankful for your help and us for that.
If we move forward to the floor plans, again, the next two pages are just your overall master plan for some second floors. Really none of, those really have not changed significantly. So I'll move to those enlarged plans and point out just a couple of the changes that are added. If you go to 3.3, which is the first floor of the eighth-grade wing, the only significant change here is that the teacher planning is in orange and the art lab that is in green at the top of the page. We flipped those from the last time. By moving the teacher planning and Ibis over to the left side, we've created an enclosed outdoor classroom play area for the special education students on this campus by putting all of those classes over on that side. And then the teachers also have access to that as well. And then by moving the art lab to the right side, they also have their own outdoor space that's partially covered as well. And that is also north-facing, so there's no direct sunlight in that space, which is, which is good for that, that function. The next page is the second floor of that same wing. There really have not been any significant changes on this. We've kind of tweaked the CTE lab layouts and given them their own storage room, similar to what you've seen at the, the high school. And so we think this is a more comparable function for them, both at the middle school level and then as they move to the high school for consistency. The next page is the athletics and fine arts. Again, really no significant changes, just some tweaks as we've laid out the training room, things like that on the right side of the page. But unless you're studying those side by side, you're never going to know. But we're still holding pretty true to this work, it would be from maybe a few hundred square feet, but still safely where, where we wanted to be with this program. And then the next page is the existing building. If you recall, we're expanding the library by adding that maker space in green in the center. A couple of changes that have occurred in the CTE lab showing in purple. Originally, the CTE lab that is shown on the top of the page was on the bottom of the page where you see conference next to the stair. The administration wanted to keep that conference room because of its location to the administration suite. And so we actually just kind of reconfigured and flipped a couple of things. And we actually think this works better because now those CTE labs have access right across the hall from one another. And then we've also modified some of the things within the administration suite to actually reduce the amount of scope there and keep a lot of those offices where they work. So we think that that's going to get moved, but it still meets the needs of what the, what the campus projects as they become a middle school. And then no changes on the second floor plans in this area. We're still just looking at opening up those locker spaces to be more collaborative for the sixth-grade students. Any questions on the floor plans? Okay. The next sheet is the exterior view of the two-story eighth-grade addition. The main entrance is just to the left off of the street. Again, really unchanged from the last time, it's just a little more polished version. So hopefully you can see the materials a little bit better. Again, we're replicating materials that are already there with the stone water table around the bottom. And then the cream-colored brick is an accent brick above that. We do have another one of those wide frames that are on across the front of the existing building that's shown on the right side of the page that will be looking towards Spiegelville Road. So we're trying to, again, keep the same language that already exists across the building. And then the next page is the athletics entrance. Again, mimicking a lot of what is the front entrance of the, of the building with the exposed structure there and the stone columns below. You will see that we've extended the bus drop-off canopy further than what the last version showed. So this goes all the way across the front of the weight room, all the way down to the locker room entrance. And so we think that this provides more length for the amount of buses that will be dropping out there. And then these next two views are, are new, we're moving into the interior. So this is just inside the athletic entrance. So what you're seeing in front of you is the entrance into the competition gym. And then to the left, where the stone wall is, is your concessions that's just right around the corner there. So we're bringing a lot of the same materials that are outside of the building in and which is very similar to what's going on in the main corridors within the building. And then we are adding a display case there in that blue and just highlighting that just to break, break up the mix and bring in that, in that building. We are also, we are also looking at the option for graphics or for something to go on that wall kind of right as you enter. Right now, we're just showing a backlit blue RVMS from River Valley Middle School. But that's just a placeholder for now, will be determined later. Also looking at just like an accent ceiling, linear ceiling in there, just to highlight it as a unique point at the entrance. And then the last view is showing the collaboration areas within the eighth-grade wing. If you recall, there's about four classrooms wrapping around the edge of each of those. And so as Steve mentioned with the elementary, this is just a growing trend that we're seeing so that students can get outside of the classroom for smaller projects or just a different learning environment. And so this will have a lot of flexible furniture, viable walls that you can see. And then underneath that stair will have a genius bar to where they can charge computers. They can sit there and work on projects together there under the stair as well. And then lastly, we have a schedule, we're still on schedule. The one thing that has changed since last time is, again, per Mazonic's request, we've moved the bid date up. So hopefully you'll see the GMP in December of this year. They would like to bid it before the end of the year. And we're also going to try to get an early utility package out. There's a lot of utilities that have to be relocated or that need three windows. And they would like to get a jumpstart on that so that after the GMP is approved in December, it won't be too long before they can actually start laying out the building itself. As the Fine Arts addition at the high school, you know, it probably looked like there was three months and nothing going on because they're just digging in the dirt, having to move everything around. So they'd like to get that out of the way. So that's all I have, so any questions?
No questions.
Thank you for incorporating all our points from last time.
Yeah. Very good.
You're much better than Steve.
It's much shorter. All right, while we're on, all matters construction related, a lot of construction out there. Buddy, is that you?
Yes, sir. I will also try to be brief, so Steve, you'll watch. On June 25th, we had, we took proposals for CMAR for the new elementary. On July 9th, we interviewed five great companies for that project. And we decided on John Irwin, which is our recommendation to use as the CMAR for the new elementary. It was, it was a tough decision. I mean, it was close, but it was five, like I said, really good companies that we interviewed. And we were excited that we had that much participation in, in the bidding process. Design meetings continue for the high school CTE addition. We've done some preliminary, or Aaron and Mazonic has done some preliminary budget numbers and it appears that it's going to come in within budget. and it appears that it's going to come in within budget, what we've budgeted, maybe under a little bit. And on August the twenty-fourth, Aubrey is going to bring me the first set of hard plans so we can start looking at them for quality control issues. So that project is moving right along. The high school, HDAC project is moving along. So far, we have not had any surprises on that. If you drove by there today, you saw a big crane, and they started setting units on top of the building today, so don't think it's ringing inside the building while they have any holes open. Also, as Aubrey mentioned, on the River Valley addition, she's hoping to get a utility plan out in October so that we can start on getting some utilities relocated, so that won't hold us up whenever we get ready to start the project. Any other, I'm not going to touch on elementary and River Valley much because I think you've had enough of that for the CTE. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, bud. Appreciate that. Monthly sign ask your tour.
Good evening. Take a look at our June financial report. If you notice, no enrollment reports are included this month. We'll start those up again in September when we have data on the 2021 school year. Be very interested to see what those look like with all the uncertainty, of course. Our general fund projection for the current year with just a couple of months remaining looks to be a hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit. Last month, it was three hundred thousand, so we moved up a couple hundred thousand. Actually, had a couple hundred thousand more tax collections during the month of June than we typically have for that time of the year. Fill collections are still down two or three percentage points, but that was good news for June. We also have a couple of budget amendments in the consent agenda. Let's see, budget amendment twenty dash fifteen is to provide funds for the early redemption of our two thousand eight, two thousand eight eighty bond series. At our August board meeting last year, we adopted a resolution to call a portion of those bonds. At that point, we're fully sure of the amount we could actually call and redeem early. So we just, I just budgeted three million, which is what we redeemed here before as a placeholder, but actually we'll be able to redeem four million, two hundred and eight thousand, so that's more, which is good. So this budget amendment is to increase our debt service budget for the year to accommodate for the increase in our early redemption there of the two thousand eight bonds. Budget amendment twenty dash sixteen is to move some salaries originally budgeted in functions twelve and thirty-one to function thirty-two, and that has no effect on the bottom line there, is moving function to, one function to another. Any questions on the financial report?
No questions on the financial report. Wes, what's the update, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, sir. So I posted the three budgets that we're required to adopt for next year, the general fund, child nutrition and debt service fund. General fund has a surplus of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. That includes fifteen new positions, nine professional, six pair act. Last year, we actually added, I believe, around fifty-two positions, so this year our role was a little more flat, hence not as many positions. Also has one percent staff raises, one and a half percent raises for teachers over five years' experience, an increase of eight dollars per month in our health insurance premiums for our employees, and a charge to technology internal service fund for iPads and nine hundred thousand. Child nutrition fund has a budget surplus of forty-two thousand. We did, our anticipating a decrease in participation, just with, of course, the uncertainty of pandemic-related issues going on, so we did decrease our revenue, but also the food costs accordingly, so it kind of washes out. Our debt service fund are posing a deficit of three million. That's part of a planned reduction in our debt service fund balance. Remember when Victor Kierger was, shows projections on our 2020 bond, in order to increase that capacity, we had a planned reduction in our fund balance, we had excess fund balance in debt service, we could use that fund balance to actually increase our capacity of our 2020 bond, and then also enable to keep our tax rate at twenty-seven cents for INS. Speaking of the tax rate, the proposed rate for next year is one point two three six four per hundred dollar property value. Now, with the new tax rate compression rules, we're adding a couple decimal places there so our tax rate unfortunately makes it a little more confusing, but the current year we're at a dollar twenty-five, so it's down about one and a half cents. For next year, the INS rate will go down to twenty-eight to twenty-seven cents, and then our M and O rate will go down about half a cent. That's still pending. Our certified values we'll receive later this week or possibly next week from the Perdido District. If those increase more than the preliminary values, and you could see that M and O rate go down a little bit more actually due to the cap two and a half percent, the property value increases at work, work manager. That's about all for the budget at this point. Any questions?
Wes, wait, this is the deadline for that final open bidding cap I got mentioned. Okay.
That, right, the August board meeting, will we, and this, it's a good question, this dollar one point two three six four includes that extra.
I thought we might talk about it down. We were about to think of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the board or the budget update? I do want to make sure for anybody that's listening in out there on the public that there was some skepticism expressed perhaps back when we were looking at the bond and what to do or not do and calling it everything in the plan to decrease of the interest in sinking fund, the INS tax rate from twenty-eight cents to twenty-seven cents, and I want everybody to see that, in fact, as Mr. Piper talked about back then, that's what's being projected and proposed. Obviously, we're not voting on that yet, but that's part of what the board was committed to back at the time, and that's where we're headed now. Thank you, Wes. The Safe Start Plan for the fall of 2020.
To rest in members of the board, I'm sure that members of the public that are listening, I know this was an agenda item that made it drew me focused to listen to our board meeting this evening, and I really do appreciate that. First caveat I want to say is today has not been a great day in public education just because of new information and changes, and that's expected when you're living in a pandemic. And so I apologize upfront, it would be a little testy every week to be, but today in particular has been trying, in other words. It's okay, we're going to be fine. We're doing everything, everything we can humanly possible for the safety and security of our students, our families, and our, in our, in our staff members. But it is never changing in terms of the pandemic, and particularly here locally. And so just to tell you about our Safe Start Plan, I hope all of you had a chance to read it. Simultaneously now, the district is hosting our Safe Start Plan on our website. We will have a dedicated website, midwayis.org/coronavirus, and then you'll be able to find all of this information that I'm talking about today. But again, as word is used, you've heard it a lot, but it's a fluid situation, meaning this plan is fluid, and today is the last time you will see just one plan in terms of that you have four members at your, on your computer there because this is going to be live, meaning we will continually, if need be, update our plan. We have the ability to do that and for it instantaneously to be updated to the web. So there won't be one document like version two, three, four, or five. Please continue to the public checking our website about the Midway ISD Safe Start Plan. So I just wanted to be sure that that was clear. So initially, we thought about talking about each one of the different components of our Safe Start Plan, but after today's announcements, it just seems that that type of information will just continue to stay fluid. And so you might recall, we had four different task forces within the district headed up by each of the assistant superintendents of the district in an outstanding job. Throughout the summer, they've been working with our staff members, principals, assistant principals, directors, been working hard on each of their four areas that they focused on. But we also gathered quite a bit of staff and public input, and we did that through, initially through, remember, in our June meeting, we talked about it, called the Thought Exchange Program. But that was captured at that period of time, and so things have changed. Lots have changed since that period of time less than about a month ago. We also did this with our staff members, and so I just want to commit that we're going to do this starting tomorrow, again, with our public by launching another thought exchange over a couple of ideas I'll share with you in just a few minutes to get their feedback and thoughts so that we can have that information in our planning for the start of the school year. The same thing with the staff. I have a meeting with them coming up, using Google Meet virtually on Monday, just so that they have some time to digest this as well, so that I, as superintendent, can hear from them too. So just in review, if you recall, we have four areas. Operations, this is a review, just remind you, the term is what operationally that we have in place. We have used a number of resources for our planning. Those resources include, of course, local and state health guidance, the Texas Education Agency, the UIL, the University Interscholastic League, but the CDC. We're looking at the, of course, the Doctors Association, different guidance that keeps coming out to us. We read it, we read it again, we interpret it, and we see how it works and functions in the public schools and what we can do. So that has just been incorporated into these four different areas. So the first one, as I mentioned, is operations. The second one, health and safety, just talks about then how we will work in our school buildings, particularly looking at how we'll respond, that is, the areas of preventing spread of COVID-19, but also responding if we see that. And so we're looking at and laid out procedures that we'll have in place to work with students that may exhibit symptoms, or students that may let us know if they test positive, all the different protocols that we have to put into place for that. Also, the current governor's executive order requires masks, that is for individuals teenagers or older. Here in this district, we're not going to ask fourth graders, are they nine or ten? That's just all fourth graders and above to wear a mask and all adults to wear a mask, not pre-K through third graders. And so those are just, for example, some of the highlights, as I say, you look at the plan, we posted on our web just to see some of the specifics about each one of those. Thirdly, though, is our instructional delivery, and we will be launching the Midway Virtual School. That will be an option throughout the entire 2021 school year if a family or parent so chooses to have their child educated in a virtual format. Our virtual, Midway Virtual School will be headed up by Dr. Vicky LaGima. She's taking on that task in addition to her other duties. In other words, basically, the principal of all of our virtual school students and staff, and so she will be working and continuing to work on our website. We will have a dedicated, you see their website, to the Midway Virtual School. That will be live as well, so our parents have the opportunity to review that and see that the expectations are much different than were when we began in March with the closing of schools, the expectations for students and the expectations for staff are going to be clearly laid out. They will equal as best as possible the same rigor of an in-person class to a virtual class. The grading standards will be similar and the same so that, as I mentioned, that we have that same equality between the two programs. And so, again, we will continue to work on those plans and develop our virtual, and give parents that opportunity to review this. But again, it's kind of back in, when we did our first thought exchange with folk, with the parents, we really saw probably closer to sixty percent, fifty-five, sixty, wanted in person, about twenty for sure, totally virtually, and then some undecided or really considered, thought about a hybrid program. And I'll explain just the definition really of hybrid can be in public schools in just a few minutes to explain that to you. So that's kind of where they, where they fail at that time. So we certainly feel like, based on the rising cases in the county, in our state, in our nation, that their thoughts and opinions may have changed. And then finally, it's placed within in the HR, there's a dedicated section for our staff members, much, much more detailed, that'll be on the staff portal, if you will, for the staff members to understand all of the nuances of working in this environment and working within COVID-19, some of the things that have changed with the CARES Act and LEED that's available, you know, to them and how they report, if they have symptoms or how they report, if they test positive, unfortunately, things of that nature too. So that is covered and will be a part of our HR team. So Ms. Marlin, now I'm going to begin to have some, you do not have these in your board packet, but this was put together, just a quick reminder, when this packet and the information presented to you was finalized, this was on Thursday, to get this out to you. Since Thursday, the Commission of Education had a call of superintendents on Friday to provide additional guidance, new guidance, new changes to the start of school. And then just today, this morning, the University Interscholastic League came out with new guidance about how five-day, six-day schools, for example, can provide extracurricular programs. We're not to begin those until after Labor Day, is the rule for both volleyball, marching band, and football, the fall offense and kickoff. So the UIL came out with much more specific guidance just this morning. And then this afternoon, here in McLennan County, the local health authority sent out information to the public saying that we cannot offer in-person class, classroom instruction until after Labor Day. So the first day that we can even offer in-person is on Tuesday, September the eighth. So we got that this afternoon. So again, very fluid situation, we're pivoting as quickly as we can to work with the information that we have at, and so, try to see here, show you there, that we began this process in terms of starting to get guidance all throughout the spring from the agency, from the CDC, really after graduation on June the fifth, hit it hard with our community and our thought exchange that we used at that time gathering the input, how people were thinking at that particular time. We all felt like, yes, we would offer virtual school, but we really thought we would see some normalcy again, if everyone thought that some months, the virus would, the cases would drop, things of that nature, but it did not occur. And so throughout, as you can see, this is the month of July and beginnings of August, we'll be researching, planning, communicating, adjusting until we get to the start of school. The next slide, Ms. Marlin, this kind of just shows you that, that you can see the word guidance, is that we receive guidance, as you can see in this wheel, as we develop our Safe Start Plan, we get additional guidance and communication, and then we're expected to get more guidance. It's not over, it's going to continue. And so we're building this as we go because this information does continue to change. So we thought then, to the point that we are, I guess, the next slide then, is, this is just another quick summary of all the different ways that we've gathered, but we do have quite a bit of things, as I mentioned to you, coming up after tonight's meeting. It was critical that we present the Safe Start Plan to you all and on today's date, the twenty-first of July, really thought it would be the plan that we would feel more confident about going forward, but as you can see, we will make some adjustments. But I will say one thing that I meant to say earlier. When we're talking about the health and safety portion of this plan, the operations portion of this plan, there's not a lot of changes to those. When we meet face to face, we still will have those precautions in place, those procedures in place. That's not going to change if we start a school as planned on August the eighteenth or are now starting school possibly on September the eighth. That doesn't change those two particular areas, so just wanted to be sure that that's clear. But we are going to, as I said, begin some, I have a meeting, Dr. Johnson and I will be tomorrow with the Council of PTAs, visit just with them a little bit about their thoughts and get their thoughts and ideas, as well as in launching, as I mentioned to you, our parent surveys and parent thought exchange programs so we can gather more information from them. And then the live one with our staff members, that I'll work with staff, will be on Monday the twenty-seventh. All right, so just as a caveat to all of this, when we talk about the start of school or we talk about in-person school, one of the things that you have to ensure in your school district, for the Texas Education Agency, is that it requires one hundred percent of your students to have access to a device and reliable internet. One hundred percent, and so that is asked upon us at the district. Thankfully- Thankfully, we have the one-to-one. And thankfully, last spring, the group purchased a refreshing the the device, the iPad that we use. Mr. Garbath, that order in, we got those. They're not back or we possess them, we possess all of those. And he and Dr. Regina are working on our procedures to to provide those to our students. And so our staff members have them already. They were able to come this summer, pick up their new updated device as well. So that we do have. Reliable internet. We continue to make surveys at the end of the year with our principals who are doing that with their schools and talking to the kids. Feel like we have a number, a good number of students at the end of last year that we felt like could use some help. So Mr. Garbath purchased a number of hotspots that we can we can roll out and we'll continue to monitor that to be sure students have the reliable internet if they do have a problem. And so that we will be sure that that does occur.
Is there any way that a hotspot on the telephone pole or something, or is it permanent in some of these areas? Is there any way to?
Well, each, sure, each of the schools themselves, you can come to our parking lot and do that. But we just know if they're in this system of a virtual, and that's not us, of course, to be in a parking lot or be mobile, they need to be at all possible in their home. And so that's why we're working as hard.
I know, I know, I know. Some people can't get to the parking lot. That's what I'm saying, is there any way in the world we can get one of the companies left that a hotspot on their telephone poles or some kind of tower, so we use these neighborhoods where the kids need it?
There's a number of options. Other schools have looked at some are to to put a mobile hotspot or an access point inside a mobile vehicle and drive it out to a heavily populated area in the morning, let it sit all day, and drive it back. You know, one of the things we leverage mostly is the local broadband services that are offering a free and discounted service to qualifying families. So our first option is to go that route if at all possible. But after exhausting all those possibilities, right now, hotspot seems to be the most feasible option for those families.
So we do have that information posted on our website, and we're going to do, continue to work hard to get that into the hands of people at the low cost, as Mr. Garbath mentioned, that qualify for. Because the companies have worked and worked hard to do that. I know that also the Texas Education Agency is wrapping up a connectivity survey. It's not going to help initially when the school starts, but trying to determine the same thing, how they could leverage in terms of statewide purchasing for devices and or for for internet services as well. So we'll see what the agency and the state level purchasing can do.
What are those hotspots hardware-wise and an ongoing monthly charge? Is that reimbursable to the state?
We we hope so. We hope it's possibly reimbursable more from FEMA. Mr. Brooks and his team have been coding separately, different purchases that we've been doing to keep up with those in the hopes that there will still be money in FEMA so that we can ask for some reimbursements to help the district along the way. So far, we have been putting all those bills. Is that correct, Mr. Brooks? But we, right now, the pot is FEMA, that we understand. It might be one other possibility from the agency. Now, the agency itself is using some of the dollars allocated to it from the CARES Act in order to to do this study, as well as to look at how they can lower the cost themselves as an agency too.
Do you need some detail on device cost and? The devices we have now from A T and T, the hardware is free. You pay for the service. It's between $15 and $30 a month, depending on which plan you get. And the latest survey we took from T E A, it's no guarantee, but they are hoping to find half of that.
So, as Jesse, Mr. Garbath said, the agency is hoping to use some of their federal dollars to help districts, cut that in half. So on a monthly fee, if you put out a hotspot or issue one to a neighborhood or to a family, that ranges, you said, $15 to $30 a month.
How many of those are we expecting to be? Loosely, today, we polled the principals during a meeting, and it looked like 50 to 60, possibly.
Possibly 50. But we need to get some more. We have some that we're anticipating, but we would look at purchasing.
So first, open virtually on the current, for normal start date, you got to ensure those that don't have access to get it?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, let me rephrase that. So if that doesn't happen, then we might have pushed back even virtual starting until?
Oh, it's possible. I'll get that in just a second.
We can take those families to communicate if they're not getting, or when we know they're not getting.
And then, of course, our principals do a great job of that. They contact, they they keep in communication with them. Challenge will be new folks to the district. Could be a challenge to us, those that are brand new to Midway, that we haven't established relationships with. But hopefully, they'll get the information and this robust website that we have will continue to provide all the the latest information. Okay, so on the on the slides here, the first, these are start date options for face-to-face. These options retain the current academic calendar. This is a reminder that was set to begin on Tuesday, August the 18th. Teachers coming back on Thursday, August the 6th, staff development, P D in the week or so or more before that, starting school on a Tuesday. They'll say this, all of these options, though, could integrate a hybrid high school model for face-to-face. That information only came again about high school on Friday afternoon. So I think the agency realized the the challenges of high schools, how large high schools are. For example, y'all know Midway High School being 2,400 students or more. And so there is this possibility that in a face-to-face model, it could still be designed in a hybrid way, meaning maybe students attend half a day or days, 10, a couple of days a week, things like that. So I would say that that's something we're still exploring to see if it's even a possibility to do that. It was not a possibility in in students in various grade paper rates. So the first option there was to proceed as planned, virtual start date was the 18th as well as in-person. So that just meant we were preparing, teachers come in at normal, we would do our surveys, we would put out and to parents a separate email asking us to select. Do you want virtual school or are you coming in person? Our guidelines are posted, read those, through those, and feel where you're comfortable, and make your decision. We have a line through that, I know the public can't see that right now, the line through that because of today's announcement from the local health authority. Today's announcement from the local health authority says we cannot offer in-person school to begin until September the 8th. So that's not an option. So any questions about that, I have the board in front of us, if anything specific I'm missing on that. That applied to all K-12 schools in McLennan County. I'll say it matches several counties in more metropolitan areas, like Travis County, Bear County, San Antonio, Harris County, Houston, Parent, and Dallas County. However, some of the years have even said no, no in-person school until the end of September, it can't begin until October 1st. So there's still, I think this could be amended at some point if conditions do not improve locally in our county. All right. So the next thing I'll visit with is something that the agency has provided to us in terms of guidance, the Texas Education Agency, and that is some transition transitions. And so we, they have allowed the possibility for a district to have a three, or the second option, as you can see there, or a four, we option, where you start virtually. And so we could consider starting all students virtually as planned on August the 18th. But remember all the caveats I told you about, to work to be sure every student has a device, has a reliable internet, is ready to go virtually visiting with our staff members. Are we ready to do that? All staff members providing virtual instruction. Dr. Regina and Dr. Pena, his team's ready to roll in the training with our staff and able to do that. So those are some of the caveats. So the first time we can have in-person instruction would be September the 8th. That is about a three-week period. So we would be going remote for three weeks. As I said, staff can be on our campuses some during that time in terms of delivering that virtual instruction and preparing for the in-person beginning then on September the 8th. The second option over there just tells you that the agency on Friday, this was the original, this was the original guidance from the from the agency, was three weeks. On Friday, that was, districts were provided more flexibility, and that's why you see this four to eight week. And so that was, Governor Abbott had kind of mentioned some of that in different press conferences and different interviews during the week. And so the commission on Friday came out with that new guidance for us. And so this then, for example, we would begin virtual instruction still August 18th, could go longer than September the 8th. We could add a week, which would be starting on September 14, 15, that that next week, or even go as long as an eight-week period. The additional four weeks, though, would have to be approved here by the local school. We can do four weeks without any action from the board, but if you want to add four additional weeks to a transition plan that does require board action of plan, that has to station, given all the terminology it's called, we send it in to the to the agency, basically request for four additional weeks. All right. Excellent. So the next one then is just simply a three-week delay. And this is, maybe you've seen it in the press, heard about it. It's my understanding, many districts are doing this across Texas, but locally, Waco I S D, I think Dr. Susan P. Cannon talked about this with her board at their last workshop meeting last week. This is delaying the virtual school or in-person school until September the 8th. This was just, of course, meets the letter of the of the local health authority's order, but it also then basically begins everything from that point forward, where we have in-person school and the parent still has the option for virtual. That that way, they don't have, again, the the internet, the reliability, they they come in person, we meet all the requirements, and we just begin three weeks later. This would require what I asked of the board for approval of a revised academic calendar, just preliminary, looking at the academic calendar. It would put us into around June the 10th through the 16th. I mean, it's, if you just take it day by day by day, you're actually in student from June 16th. We have some flexibility with that. We could look at some of the holidays that are in our current calendar. We could look at some of the staff development dates. We could front load more of those at the beginning. Might look at some of the holidays in order to trim that up, if you will, so that we don't go too, too long in June, make it a much more compact calendar, if that makes sense. So that is just delaying school. Teachers would also delay their first day back with us. Remember, teachers are on contract. They're on 187-day contracts. So I can't have them come in August the 6th as normal, because then I don't have them on contract to finish the school year in June. So we would delay their entry into the district and begin our staff development. So that's just a just a pause. And then finally, five and six are just some different options, looking at the fact that, as you'll notice, the column, in-person start date is always September the 8th. But we could look at, if we wanted to, provide a little more time to spend where with the technology team, principals checking in to be sure that everyone has reliable internet, that we can do that, you know, we could launch virtual instruction August 25th. That's a one-week delay or possibly two-week delay in the virtual for a week before we actually have, you know, the option for kids to come back to school. So I don't mean to say those to confuse you, but but we would have some flexibility to do that, you know, in terms of just starting right at August the 18th. We could push that start, virtual start date at least another week back, maybe to, just to be, to ensure that we have all of our devices delivered to every student up and running and that they have reliable internet to begin the virtual instruction. All right, Ms. Marlin, I haven't anything to add to that.
That's enough.
Okay. So again, just to reiterate through all of these, when we when we can begin school face-to-face, we could look at hybrids models at our high school. The problem with any of the other school models, again, is that in the the agency guidance and their rules is all parents must must have the ability, once you begin school and have a face-to-face, they have to have an opportunity to come to school all five days. So they can't have hybrids at the elementary and middle school, because that would be, some students would be with possibly, you know, two days a week. And a teacher would have a group of kids a couple of days a week, some kids virtually, and some kids, they're all five days a week. So that is logistically impossible. But high school would be the whole high school. We have rules there where students would have to be in school five days a week. As I said, they could be every other day or Monday, Tuesday, clean and plan Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is another block of kids, something like. Possible. So I hope that's not making it less clear for you. It's very, very, as you can see, continuous at this point. Appreciate, though, the the health authority. We know where we stand. We know what we say now, that it's no in-person until September the 8th. So at least we have this time now to begin that, begin that planning process. I'll ask my team if I missed anything that was critical. Make sure that you can, so, questions, members of the board? Do you have any questions?
Oh, good. Why don't we, Jesse, do we still have a gentleman, Mr. Witt, that wanted to address the board?
I believe so.
Yes.
He's on, he can, he's ready to speak. He can press star six anytime and be unmuted.
If he's, if he's on and hearing us.
Hello, hello?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Witt? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you loud and clear. You, under our board policy, you have three minutes. And we appreciate you hanging in there with us till this somewhat late hour. And I'm going to ask our board secretary, Stu Smith, to keep time, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And obviously, my comments have changed a little bit, given today's news. My name is Colin Witt. Our family lives in Hewitt. We have three kids through the district, a 2020 graduate, high school sophomore, and a Catsumon Creek third grader. And I want to say that we deeply appreciate everyone's work on this plan. I've read every page of it, every word, and I think it's a fantastic plan, giving parents options for in-person as well as virtual school. And I also want you to know that we trust school boards to make decisions like this, much more than unelected health bureaucrats. And I'll just leave it at that. I would encourage the district to stick with the plan that's in front of us, to start school on August 18th, to let families sign up for in-person or virtual school, and then to treat this interim absence as a as a temporary closing, just as we would if a school was closed because of an outbreak. Treat this forced closing as temporary and resume in-person school as soon as the order expires or is rescinded. I think with 60% choosing in-person, which I think was the stat quoted earlier, that should really help with social distancing on those campuses. We are firm believers that kids need to be in school on campus, and I think Huckabee said it earlier, that those personal teacher interactions and relationships are key, as well as the social skills those kids develop. We're also big supporters of the fine arts, C T E classes, and athletics, and we want, you know, want want those to continue to develop competence and build skills and character. I want to thank Dr. Johnson for answering some of my questions earlier about symptoms being treated as not normal to you and masks. I appreciate that. Bottom line here is that the science is behind us on this, that the stats show that school-age kids don't contract this as often as adults. They have fewer or no symptoms and very few deaths, only two reported in the entire state of Texas, 16 and under right now from the C D C. And cases here in McLennan County have been declining since July 2nd, on a on a general decline. So everything we can do to get students back in school in person is what we would encourage you to do, and we are very supportive and appreciative for all of your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. We appreciate your your appreciation, my lady. I don't know if I can say it, and your your interest, and let me just say this, as much as not speaking for anybody, but obviously, board members potentially, staff, other parents that would like for us to start school on August 18th for a period of reasons, including Dr. Murder's order, we can't do that as an in-person. The finances, the teacher contracts, and all those things, just, that's just not a viable option. Can we get up and running and meet the 100% requirement for virtual instruction? Then, obviously, we're going to let the administration work on that, and as you know, they've been very, very diligently working throughout this entire process. And I know they will continue to do that. And I know George, the superintendent, and I, when we met Thursday morning, one of the things that we talked about was the potential that we might need to have a special call for meeting before our office meeting. board meeting before our office meeting, depending on what happened. And lo and behold, here we had the Friday phone call with the commissioner, the UIL this morning, and Dr. Burner this afternoon, and fluid, that's a really good word for it, fluid. And so again, thank you for your, your comments tonight. Now I'm going to go ahead and open it up for the board for questions for the administration on our Safe Start Plan.
Senior, does my clarify, I think the consensus sounds like most of us would like to start August eighteenth in some form, but just for listeners and for me, that is not a choice unless we can confirm everybody has it.
You're correct.
And I know we're trying to resolve that. I guess what are we doing to figure that out?
Well, that would be though, I think the timeframe to figure that out would be once we make that call, that that is our goal, that's common. With that type of requirement though is, is that what if we don't, can't get one hundred percent? What if there are more deserts, if you will, of, of not reliable internet? That's, was not part of the funding, was not part of requirements last spring, it is a new requirement. Because then the, the side is, okay, you don't have that, then the child must attend face-to-face. So then step, and the next layer is now, I can't start August the eighteenth. Dr. Burner, local health authorities said you must start earliest September the eighth. So I guess it's not like we can quickly move students, okay, we realize we don't have the internet, so you need to come face-to-face or something like that. And so that is, in my head, I haven't figured out exactly how, because we have students registering right now. So I highly encourage those listening to call, please, register, please, let us know you're coming back. I know our schools and school secretaries are doing that, they may get a double call, too many calls. But that's why we want to be sure that they have a slot and if they're coming back in the district. We always have at this time, students that do not register, many times they get moved, and so that would be also our challenge, just to make sure that students have left the district and are attending another district. But we don't get that information until later in the first semester when records are requested. That's when we know exactly when another student. I mean, we do, there's computerized, or we, we can transfer records digitally, but I always have to wait when those come, if they're going to another Texas public school. So the other thing will be if they're not, will just be continuing to call. There could be some that just choose nothing, they don't want this, they want to just homeschool, if you will. That's different than, than participating midway virtual school, they just have decided take a break, they're going to do it themselves, maybe group families get together, just ride this out, and hopefully come back to the district when this is gone at some point. So we feel like there could be, there's national studies on that, I mean, it's kind of hard to predict, but.
So where does the school's responsibility begin and, and the parent's responsibility begin? You know, or are you being asked to do something that's outside of our stroke?
I should say, you know, thinking on my feet here at the, at the podium is, we're going to do our real ones. So will there be somebody that, you know, that might slip through? We hope not. We're going to work as hard as we can to identify and find all of our kids, to be sure that they have the device and that they, they, when they register, the second registration, if you will, we were talking about this virtual school, they'll sign off that says, yes, I have a lot of internet. We, we'll, we have a form that will be sure that parents sign that off. So there will be a lot of, lot of communication of parents when we don't hear from them. We'll continue to take the database and, all right, we have, we have eight thousand four hundred kids, now we're down to four thousand kids, now we're down to two thousand, we'll keep looking for all.
How much time do you need to verify whether or not the internet's available for the
Thank you, Dr. DeGimo, Mr. Garnado, I mean, simply ask some questions. I think we have to be open to the fact that they think that it might be, and then when they start running the virtual school, it may not, you know, we're going to have a technology help line available even longer than just your normal, I think, five times at least when we get started with this, if Mr. Burns, some of his staff will be there to take some calls. And so then, again, we'll have to pivot, we might have to then provide a hotspot because they thought they had a lot of internet.
Well, it's, it's just, just my opinion, but my preference would be to, to, to start virtually as soon as is practical. Maybe that's not August eighteen, but maybe it's not three weeks after that either. So whatever's most practical would be, would be my, my preference.
Right, that's why, it's a good point, Mr. Gall, why we put the next line, Ms. Marlon, is five and six there. That's, that was our same line of thinking, that maybe we need a little bit more time to be sure that the student has a device and internet, so it's just maybe a one-week delay only and start virtually and get kids going. So it's to not disrupt the academic calendar too much. I will say this, with the academic calendar, we will bank some days. You might remember, board members, that we really are funded through minutes of instruction. And so we do, our current academic calendar that's been approved has had a number of days that have been banked above the, the minimum of seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes that are required for the, for our entire school year. So we could have, as I said, we have some flexibility, but that flexibility would be useful in these last two scenarios that, that you see there on the screen.
I'm just worried if a delay, that we might have another day outbreak in, in November or December or February, we'll need to take a month off then, and then we're pushed into July, I'm like, the later we start, we're just going to burn that flexibility, but now realize we're working within the confines of the gap.
So yeah, we're going to hear from them. Ms. Marlon, we'll launch that tomorrow, we'll see if anything's different with our parents. I think we'll get a large response. We always have, we've got thousands that participate with us, I think over four thousand last time. So people are, I think, tuned, listening and ready for, for that, so I bet they'll be, could be higher, and really appreciate that.
Would it be possible to change the wording on whatever we're sending now, and let us know if you have internet access, might we really make that more? You want, we want school to start, be sure you want school to start, but we can't start if we don't have a hundred percent internet connections. Another way we can know that is if you tell us you don't have it for years and weeks.
Because we're just kind of single-handed.
So maybe we can, maybe we get them to help push this along, we word it strongly or something.
Is there a different media we should use? If we're people who have internet and we're sending that internet survey, probably we don't have to pack them all.
Most of our surveys are, are heavily populated by, by certain same schools every time. So certainly we need some of our other campuses to help us reach out, and those are usually personal phone calls.
The other thing, George, yeah, I mean, I know what the DEA said about you got to have a hundred percent, and I, I understand a hundred percent. On the other hand, I think it's unrealistic to expect a school district to be able to find and identify somebody that doesn't have internet. You know, if, if they don't, they've got to tell us that, and there's got to be a window of opportunity. I mean, the fact that somebody, let's say, student A, if we started August eighteen virtually, and we have student A that has it that day, and then something happens and they don't, they got to tell us that. I don't think that, that all is lost because we got one student that for one day that never relied on the internet.
No, you can't keep pushing back to start waiting on responses from ten students.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think.
We're taking the ground somewhere.
And I think the, the personal phone call, certainly we've got, I mean, for a lot of the folks that would be returning, I understand, new, new parents, new, new folks to our community, to our district, we don't necessarily have, we don't even know who they are until they register, but for returning people, we've got cell phone numbers, we've got other ways to reach them besides just through our website or through, you know, social media that's
So yeah, and that, in those scenarios, too, let's say your case, which you mentioned, a student starts, yeah, then they're monitored, our teachers know, lost contact, but it's, you know, we were doing that last spring as well. And so they were, we were able to bring kids back into the fold that we lost, and that number of, of unengaged was very, very low in our district. We're proud of that, that a majority of our students were engaged.
Well, what is the fine print with legal ease? I mean, we start with a hundred percent internet access, doesn't it say we have to have a hundred percent every single day?
There is no fine print at this game.
It says you just start with a hundred percent, right?
I'm just going on my words, as I said, we're doing every weekend to contact and, and be sure and assume, starting that, because they will have a device, and, and we will know students that don't come to pick those up because we have to have a pickup too. So that's another sidebar, but another way to gather data is when we put that out there, now this is your time to roll in and pick up your device from the district, those lists of students that we don't come, and we, we also can have that to work from.
The thought of Robert's TA has, I, I worked, I've seen him showing up here, an audio loss on the.
You know, how do schools start, am I going to come pick up my audio?
We'll tell my kid that.
Once student goes to pick up your audio, that's not a sustainability.
Well, we would, that's what I'm saying, we would call, we would get it.
I just think we need to, I don't think we can decide anything today, obviously. And we're going to have to have another meeting, first part of August, probably, in a couple of weeks. So I think the administration, from my, my standpoint, might need to think about establishing some sort of a date, which you need, to do this hundred percent or as best you can a hundred percent. Then we go on, virtual start date, actual start date, or in-person start date.
Yeah. The only recommendation that we would make is if we start virtually on August the eighteenth, there's nothing changing. That would, we're actually.
Yeah, that's, that's possible.
So I'm just saying, if we delay a week, then that's when we would come say we just, they're like, we need like a week, one more, at least one more week to ensure that our students have their device and their internet.
And we can do that. You can take time out Thanksgiving, and doesn't have to be any payers, not just Thursday, Friday, during the semester.
Have a lot of flexibility, as I said, with our bank minutes of instruction, as well as some of the holidays and teacher work.
So I think we should look forward, just, I know when I leave here tonight, I'm going to get asked, you know, what are we going to be starting?
Ellen, tomorrow, we'll be launching and getting the thoughts and ideas, specifically asking these different scenarios. Maybe, you know, is it really comfortable starting virtual school August eighteenth? That's kind of the, it's a point-in-line question. We'll have to, Tracy, we'll have to be, think through the needs, at least explain the fact that we cannot start face-to-face as a local health authority order until September the eighth, just so that that doesn't get confused.
Do we know when we'll make some kind of announcement as to what the plan's going to be?
We're hoping then to launch that today, tomorrow, is what, the twenty-second? At least probably about one week from then, we should have a.
Something the next week.
And then the window will be opened to register, the, if we go virtually, then we won't have to have that window, we're just, that's just what we're doing. Then we'll be sending out more specific information about.
One of the other things we got to remember is, is just as we got the order from our local health authority today, we have no assurance that moving forward, we don't get an order that says you're not going to do in-person attendance until September twenty-eighth. And, and to that end, I think it's all the more important that if feasible, we'd be ready for virtual instruction August eighteen.
I think it's a real risk that I could have.
Yeah.
They're just, they're showing the unknowns and, and then the decision to make your thigh rubs. I don't think they want to be that person who puts this on a grid, they're just, you know, they're risk averse. I think it's real sense, yeah, the cases that are served again.
And I think there's a little bit of a follow the leader, maybe risk averse, and I think that's, as George stated, the opening of his comments, or, or during the course of his comments about all of the counties, the larger, the counties in Texas with larger populations than it already done, if not exactly, that we're very close to what we got today. And I think there was a strong element of that, that it was follow the leader, and, and I don't mean that in a critical sense of, of Dr. Burner, I, I get it, you know, but it doesn't change the fact that it's where we are for now, but there's absolutely no assurance that that's where we would continue to be as far as in-person instruction.
We may get the guidance tomorrow.
What's up? Other questions, comments, discussion from the board?
I have some questions about the Safe Start Plan that I read before, you already called part. So as Rick was in his little house on construction, I feel like. So this is kind of a cheap question, picking two in the weeds here. Talks a lot about opportunities to wash hands, opportunities to use hand sanitizers. Our kids have opportunities to wash their hands a lot too, and they never do it. I mean, how are we going to enforce that opportunity? And the one thought that in medical world we do is you're supposed to foam in and foam out, walk in the patient room, hand sanitize, you do your thing, you walk out with hand sanitizer. And I don't know how, we need stations y'all are visiting, but if we could have a hand sanitizer in each classroom, that would be going to be too cumbersome to foam in and foam out. They'd rather get clean hands than starting. Now on the bus, same idea, if the bus can put a hand sanitizer dispenser right there, the kids come to the bus, clean up, and same thing getting out, maybe you might win some. I don't know, is that?
We did, we have those, we have it.
Yes.
Okay.
All, all that you said is, may not be that specific in the plan, but we have every room has a really good hand sanitizing, in every bus, in the inner and brief of the bus.
Then another comment, the, uh, Mr. Witt had his email, was talking about the executive order for masks, and what are we going to do when that order is lifted? Do we got a plan in place for that, or we should defer to the executive orders?
Haven't thought that one. Be honest with me about, about the mask orders. I mean, my opinion, every person is certainly asking, if, if the order's lifted, if they wear a mask if they want to. I mean, that's their personal choice, and they're going to be, you know, they not wearing masks. I just feel like, again, we have to look carefully at that and see more guidance. The governor listed, I would look, the local folks will keep it in place for mine.
The other thing there, Andy, I, I think, everything you said a minute ago, the risk averse, I think it's going to be always down the line, will Governor Abbott lift that part of the market order?
Oh, that's what we agree is.
Yeah.
And one more kind of big topic, probably most asked question I've had is, what are we going to do if student A goes home sick? What are the other twenty-five kids going to do? Do we notify all those families? Do we quarantine the whole room? You know, there's a whole bunch of things not called COVID that are kind of strep and flu and all the normal stuff. And then we talked about the check, subcommittee, have we got any more concrete plan on that or still working on it?
We're trying to pull that up, I mean, we're following, where is it?
Well, I read, everybody talks about the actual student being sick, or the teacher being sick, but not so much, what do we do if I'm sick? Does my teacher have to be quarantined? Or does my brother have to quarantine and those, you know, you know, third-degree separation exposures?
So the lab compartment case, because we face, would be what we would stick to, adhere to that, and we would be staying close contact with that. So with a family member that has it at home, is a lab compartment case, we would consider that close contact, and that student would need to quarantine. At a school setting, if we follow our rules of close contact, then we're talking about fourth grade and up are always going to have masks on and are going to be distanced as much as possible. So there will be limited times where close contact, the definition of it is met. In extracurriculars, when masks are off or exercising, masks off or playing or engaging in a band, those would be some circumstances where we would have to count on our teachers and our staff members to identify those students who were in close contact. A letter would be sent, because it's required, to let that, once we do a little bit of that tracing, or a lot of that tracing, to find out who was in close contact, and those would be quarantined. So another letter that we were proposing though would be also, just to let people know transparency, someone did test positive in your class in that grade level, and the students would be interacting with each other as they go to the cafeteria or as they go to recess, things like that. But we would clarify that there was no close contact. So our most likely events of close contact are third grade and under with no masks in extracurriculars.
So if someone goes home, unfortunately, our now COVID test is taking three to five, seven to ten days, if someone takes forever to come back, those days while the student is home waiting on testing, I guess they can't come back until the results are, and the other students, would they be informed that they had a potential exposure? that they had a potential exposure or waiting until we have a positive confirmed?
Required by law is positive confirmed, lab confirmed case. However, we're working really hard to be as transparent as possible. And so we have a lot of different ideas in mind. And that would be, you know, until we know that student is confirmed, then we would not send out that confirmation.
Until we know it's confirmed, yeah. And then I guess when we, there's going to be some level of PIPA and FERPO involved in here too.
Yes.
To tell everybody. I think that's going to be a hard message to get out to parents. I think they're going to hear through the grapevine, somebody went home sick. There's going to be some level of freaking out. I don't know whether they're going to handle that. If you tell everybody, hey, somebody went sick, then they're going to freak out. If you don't tell them, then, I mean, it's just so individually different.
And COVID is very different, but we have, historically, we've really tried hard to let people know. In a secondary classroom, for example, if three of them have a flu, we let the parents know. Have we been required by law to do so? No. But we let them know so that they can be aware and watch for students at home. So with COVID, I just believe that that transparency level is probably going to be a little bit higher. And we're just going to be extremely vigilant and try to be as transparent as possible to get that information out to the parents.
Hopefully we get more rapid testing because with the flu, you might not have 10 minutes. You go drop your, your flu, you're threatened by RSV, you know all of it. It's just unfortunate, you know, it's the only thing COVID's hard. Everything else is easy. Everything's uncertain and it takes forever and confusing and it's hard to be clear. Okay. I think that was our main questions after reading too that.
We did add to it, so maybe the version you're packing, Dr. Johnson did add more.
Okay.
Since the last thing you wrote. And then also remember, we have to take the honor system of self, looking at the symptoms and self-screening each and every day. So I hope, you know, parents see that in their child and understand the school, the child in school can handle it, with the etc.
I've got to ask my little one if he's.
We'll send you a mail. But I'm saying that, that's really, really important, both on the staff side as well as the student side, that they're not even coming to the campus. But y'all know the young, you know, you know, young children, fevers and things like that can pop up quickly. And the guidelines just says that if they do, could get, get a diagnosis, let's say it's something else like a strep throat and they get over it quicker, you have to come back to the doctors and know they're not quarantined for this following time. If the doctor confirms other type of illness, decides.
I think the confirmed cases for that person is actually pretty straightforward. It's just the contacts that are counting part of.
Tracy will be very challenging.
Yeah.
As Dr. Johnson mentioned, particularly though, with those non-marked masks, third, third grade and below.
So one of the things we're running into from a business standpoint is when, when someone gets sick and they not only take themselves out, they take several people around and out for someone that's tired until it's been tested and covered its whole back. So I think as a result, as a business, we're, we're purposely over hiring because we know we're going to have for the next year, the element of having large groups of people available to work. That's really tough in your environment when we've got contract employees that are very specialized and, you know, relationally connecting with these groups of kids. So what, what's your plan there? I mean, there's still what you can do with substitutes, but even then, you know, are we going to have us in all the other school districts that are going to be sprinkling?
Well, something brought the point to me that a lot, some of the substitute population are, are older, more rich.
They're some of our highest, some of the subs. Good point. So believe, you know, I can say this with certainty, through all of this, there's not additional funding. Not additional funding, of course, to hire additional staff, well, part-time staff. We're trying to recruit retired teachers, those who may come in part-time or something like that to do that. You heard the budget, you heard how close it is, and Mr. Brooks just presented to you earlier, it's not. Don't have the dollar to do that. So we have to creatively use what dollars we have. And so, and also the functions of some of our parents may change. Some of the paraprofessionals that may have other duties, they may be having to cover class. You know, if we don't have a substitute teacher, because the teacher is out. Because you're right, we fear, this Dr. Pocoyevich and all this tracing of kids, but then we know about the staff. The staff member may be perfectly healthy, but their spouse may, may have things like that. And it's unknown. We're not positive about our labor force that will have 100% coverage here. But Slade's going to be hearing the substitute applications up down about the same.
It's about the same, but I think we are, have talked about disutilizing, not only our parents, but even our, we have instructional specialists and we have paraprofessionals that we can deploy out. We're going to have to really look at it differently. Like even our assistant principals, if we're one virtual, you know, disutilizing the personnel differently is probably what we're going to be doing next year.
And only guys think about how those, how that, how the personnel interacts. Like we, we shut down all of our break rooms because we all belong mingling, they're sitting across from each other, they're eating lunch. When we find out one second, now you, you lost a whole crew. So.
One of the things we've been our task, for these guidance, was that if we had a teacher that's been at the center of the unit, and she's been in here and he's been exposed, that he's not sick, he could teach virtually, virtually, sequentially to the classroom. He might have a sort of paraprofessional in their monitoring behavior, but that teacher's still teaching. You're not having to use leave or different things like that. So we're going to have to really be creative.
We'll also have some flexibility with our virtual numbers. You can have more students, you can have a higher student to teacher ratio. They're not dealing with a lot of the things that the teacher deals with physically in the classroom, discipline, management of the body in the classroom. So we'll have a little bit of flexibility to move some students around. We're going to keep the pace the same with those virtual teams. So if a virtual teacher is sick, those kids will still be able to get the same instruction by those partner teachers. But like Ms. Slade said, we are going to be able, going to have to get really creative with the face-to-face instruction. When we do have partnering people together, having a teacher, like she said, teach virtually while there's somebody else doing the management of the class, teachers on the screen from home. We're going to have to get really creative this year.
Well, as, as a district, we've been very blessed with a nice general fund balance. And if we were ever going to find an emergency, then use something for, that, that money for, you know, we, we as a board have to be flexible in thinking about what you guys bring to us this, this time.
But I would also say we got to be careful because 2011, state slapped $5.4 billion. And you look at the parallel between what caused that to happen and where we are right now with House Bill 3 and all the money the legislature had, and they did what they did. And now all the money they don't have, they're going to whack public schools again. It's coming, it's coming.
Just yesterday, the control released, I believe the number is 4.86 billion short. It's the estimate for this buying, not, not budget planning for next year, you know, the next two years, just the fiscal year 21. Remember, we're on a two-year budget cycle. So looking at all the gas reductions, sales tax reductions, all the other fee reductions, it's about almost $5 billion short revenues versus.
And it's going to get even worse because the thing that we've already seen ticking up in terms of our property tax collections going down, everybody's going to start seeing that because there are lots of people out there that aren't going to be able to pay them along with what we've had, particularly for midway, because we've historically had an incredibly high rate. And, and when that happens across the state, those shortages are in the funding system that are supposed to be picked up by the state. And the state isn't going to have the money to pick them up. So.
Sounds like a voice experience over there. Not, not first rodeo.
I just had one thing for you, Ford. It was about the empower program. I think it was a fantastic job with all this, but I was a little concerned that we still wanted to keep doing that. It always says the parents have to sign away for permission, like their child or students, it's on page 231. Unless there's a student go out in the community, but I'm just wondering, shouldn't we start off still doing that program? I didn't know if you'd taken a poll of all those parents that were in that class last year, see if they, I don't know.
I think it would be a self-select again. If they don't have to, they choose not to, then we would have to evaluate how many students we have when it's all done. But that's students, that is so important to their wellbeing.
I know, I know. I love that program. I just, that's, you know, bill trip, try to do an extra bill trip. Even just in the UIL step, I thought this is putting all those kids really out around a lot of other people and just in bad.
Hopeless all over precautions with the masks and, you know, it's also a good teaching ability for the teachers to teach them about the pandemic and how to, to distance and model that, how to hand wash, how to wear the mask. Yeah, but we'll, you know, in terms of the parents reading through that and determining that that's their choice, certainly enrollment will dictate it in terms.
Speaking of masks, I know that they've got, got to wear them, they've got to wear them. But I had a concern brought to me, a parent of a student who has some hearing challenges. I don't think they wear an A, but they're very dependent on a certain kind of like breathing and facial expressions and instead of picking up some of their instruction, further from the whole case. And, and they don't want their child to fall behind. Are there options for, for accommodating kids that, you know, so much of communication is non-verbal anyway, and they were just, they were real concerned about their child falling behind because they can't read the lips. I don't, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, or maybe that's a individual.
Something we're looking into and we, we're ordering some samples, but they do have masks that are clear so that you can see the face. We don't know how good they are. There are some that claim they are reusable and they don't fog. And so we're ordering a few samples and that's a possibility, but you know, we've thought about that. Another possibility is to, to utilize your mask with your face shield so that if you do need to lower your actual mask when you're speaking to a particular student, have a face shield. So we're still thinking through some of those issues.
Pam, I think the other thing, structurally that we're looking at, like our professional development for teachers in, with what time we have for. We're going to talk to teachers about creating lessons that fit the virtual environment. So if it's a direct teach, if it's a lecture, you can record that. And then it's available for a virtual student, because our high school kids will be, our high school teachers, senior students can be ruled anyway. You record the lecture, your face, face kids also have access to that lecture because you're going to post it in the same learning environment, the same LMS, as the virtual kids will have access to. So it could be when the students in those classes, that the lecture won't just be that one-time direct teach where they deliver it, but it's also in this audio video file.
There you go.
It's stored, and then they interact with the teacher, with their peers, they can clarify things. They don't necessarily have to call it out in class where we're in a meeting, you're doing.
Correct. Thank you.
Anybody? All right. Thank all of y'all. Appreciate all the hard work. Can only imagine how frustrated it is for y'all. Uh, consent agenda, consideration of consent agenda. We have finished from our meetings, back in June, we got our board meeting calendar for the 2024 school year, amended orders for election, our schematic design for elementary school number seven, created the CMR ranking on the elementary school, our student code conduct for the coming school year, approval of our own, LOU, the challenge cabinet, a budget business Wesley talked about, approval of lease agreement on the old Jefferson Road property, and then approval of the settlement. But the lawsuit is any more than wish to remove any item from the consent agenda. All right, here you turn. Again, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Stitt, second. Second by Mr. Pagel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Given that that motion carries. Not that we're going to be going to task, but you know, kind of, but.
Well, everything I've read in Mr. Prescott says they're not changing the schedule.
Excuse me?
Everything I've read says they're not changing the schedule.
Yes.
I mean, I read it just last week and there's no.
Virtual. Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, we do it virtually.
I know.
But we still have a delegate and an alternate that we need, I guess, for the delegate assembly, whether it's in-person or virtual. We have anybody that wants to volunteer or we have somebody that wants to nominate some.
I mean, we don't.
I, I appreciate.
I know, they can be Pocoyevich.
Second.
Second, third.
All right, we're going to appoint to, to Pocoyevich, thank him for the service. Service, y'all. All right. Thank you, Brad. So we have to actually have the board vote on that?
Yes.
We do? All right. So we had a motion by Mr. Tullis and a second by Mr. Pagel to appoint Andy as our delegate and Brad as our alternate. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Personale.
No, sir. It's just updates for you to review.
Yeah. What is the, one question I have when you did it, it was by our seat, there are a number that have an asterisk above.
Those are ones that just came in because after the order.
That's what I thought in your issue. Okay. Uh, superintendents communications.
I think I said enough.
Also, good answer.
I'm done.
See, every time this contract, we need to go to closed session for that. How are we going to do closed session?
We can, I have it set up in the room over there with barriers like this. If you feel comfortable with that, or y'all can stay in here and we can leave if you feel more comfortable with that.
What's the word you play there?
I've snatched in the other room. But I can bring them in here.
All right. So at 9:48 under 55174, Texas government, we're going to be going to closed session.
So we're moving.
Just the rest I got also printed out, that's probably the contract that was in the packet with that. We have to be required to know that you're cool, and we're pressing that this day we have to go to the end.